I declare open the 11th Emergency Special Session of the General Assembly. Annulled by the Secretary-General on the convening of the Emergency Special Session has been circulated in Document A/ES-11/1. Before proceeding further, I would like to remind members of the following mitigation measures that are in place for this meeting. All delegates are required to wear a mask or a face covering at all times whilst in public space and in the General Assembly Hall except when directly address in the meeting. In the size of a delegation for member states, observer states and the European Union should not exceed four persons and for other observers one person in this hall. Due to the temporary closure of the east side emergency doors, in the event of a fire or an emergency which requires an evacuation, please use the west side emergency doors and the stairway next to the elevator banks. Doors in the third and the fourth balconies, please use the stairway next to the elevator banks. I now invite representatives to stand and observe one minute of silent prayer or meditation. Thank you. I should now like to draw the Assembly's attention to Rule 63, which states: "Not withstanding the provisions of any other rule and unless the General Assembly decides otherwise, the Assembly, in case of an Emergency Special Session, shall convene in plenary meeting only and proceed directly to consider the item proposed for consideration in the request for the holding of the session." Without previous reference to the General Committee or to any other committee, the President and Vice Presidents for such Emergency Special Sessions shall be respectively the Chair and the Chairman of those delegations from which were elected the President and Vice Presidents of the previous session. I shall repeat the first part of that rule: "Notwithstanding the provisions of any other rule and unless the General Assembly decides otherwise." If there is no objection, I shall take that the General Assembly will proceed accordingly. It is so decided. Next, I should like, in keeping with established practice, to invite the attention of the General Assembly to Document A/ES-11/3 containing Article 19 of the Charter. May I take it that the Assembly duly takes note of the information contained in this document? It is so decided. In that connection, may I further take it that it is the wish of the General Assembly to follow the provisions of Resolution 76/2 of 11 October 2021, by which the Comoros, Sao Tomo and Principe and Somalia are permitted to vote in the General Assembly until the end of its 76th session, and to also allow these member states to vote at the 11th Emergency Special Session. It is so decided. We shall now proceed with the appointment of the members of the Credentials Committee. Rule 28 of the Rules of Procedure provides that the General Assembly at the beginning of each session shall appoint on the proposal of the President a Credentials Committee consisting of nine members. In accordance with precedents, the Credentials Committee of the 11th Emergency Special Session should have the same membership as that of the 76th regular session of the Assembly, namely the Bahamas, Bhutan, Chile, China, Namibia, the Russian Federation, Sierra Leone, Sweden and the United States of America. If there is no objection, I shall consider the Credentials Committee constituted accordingly. It is so decided. I now invite the Assembly to turn its attention to Subitem B of Item 3 of the provisional agenda entitled "Report of the Credentials Committee." As proposed in the letter from the President of the General Assembly dated 27th February 2022, in light of the urgency of the matter to be considered, it is recommended that the Assembly accept the credentials approved for the 76th regular session for the purposes of the 11th Emergency Special Session. In this regard, I recall that the Credentials Committee of the 76th regular session accepted the credentials of the representatives of all member states at its meeting held on 1st December 2021, and the General Assembly approved the report of the Credentials Committee by its Resolution 76/15 of 6th December 2021. This would be without prejudice to the right of member states to submit separate credentials with respect to the 11th Emergency Special Session and would not set a precedent for future sessions. I hear no objection. May I take it that it is the wish of the Assembly to accept the credentials approved for the 76th regular session for the purpose of the 11th Emergency Special Session on an exceptional basis and without setting a precedent? It is so decided. We now turn to the adoption of the agenda. The provisional agenda of the 11th Emergency Special Session is contained in Document May I take it that the Assembly wishes to adopt the agenda as it appears in Document It is so decided. The Assembly will now consider Agenda Item 5 entitled "Later dated 28th February 2014 from the Perman representative of Ukraine to the United Nations addressed to the President of the Security Council," Document S/2014/136. I will now deliver my remarks from the rostrum.
His Excellency Antonio Guterres, Secretary-General of the United Nations, Excellencies distinguished delegates. We are all gravely concerned about the fast deteriorating situation and ongoing military action in Ukraine. As I emphasized last week, the military offensive by the Russian Federation is a violation of the territorial integrity and sovereignty of Ukraine and is inconsistent with the Charter of the United Nations. Today, I renew my call for an immediate ceasefire, for all parties to exercise maximum restraint and for a full return to diplomacy and dialogue. The convening of this 11th Emergency Special Session of the General Assembly, rooted in the Charter and mandated in Resolution 377A5 entitled "Uniting for Peace," is a new opportunity to ensure that the leadership of the United Nations is up to the expectation of the people we serve on matters related to peace and security. It is imperative that we act on behalf of the women, children and men caught in the crossfire. It is imperative that we pursue all available channels to contain the situation, to de-escalate tension and to seek peaceful resolution in accordance with international law and the principles of the United Nations Charter. I welcome the announcement by the Secretary-General on Friday that 20 million from the Central Emergency Response Fund will be allocated to the humanitarian crisis in Ukraine. The humanitarian consequences on civilian population, in particular women, children, the elderly and other vulnerable groups, will be devastating. The mass exodus of refugees, including foreign nationals numbering over half a million from Ukraine to the eastern edge of the European Union, has showed no signs of stopping. Checkpoints at the borders of Poland, Hungary, Slovakia, Romania and the non-EU members Moldova have turned into choke points. I encourage member states to support humanitarian initiatives as they become available. My dear friends, there are no winners in war, but countless lives are torn apart. To that effect, security and access for humanitarian efforts must be guaranteed. Excellencies, the United Nations Charter drafted so soon after the Second World War is based on the principle of sovereign equality. It outlines a world where member states settle their international disputes by peaceful means without the threat or use of force. The ongoing military offensive is inconsistent with this. It is an affront to the founders of this organization and everything it stands for. The violence must stop. Humanitarian law and international humanitarian law must be respected and diplomacy and dialogue must prevail. Excellencies, my dear colleagues, in April 1946, the League of Nations dissolved, and in 26 years of the existence of an organization which ultimately had proven incapable of preventing the outbreak of the most destructive war in human history. It was the League's failure to provide a mechanism for the enforcement of the international collective security that exposed its most fatal flaws. The Right Honourable Viscount Robert Cecil, one of the original architects behind the League of Nations, in his final eulogy to the League said: "The League is dead; long live the United Nations." We are now in the 76th year of the existence of the United Nations. Let us remind ourselves that we founded the United Nations to maintain international peace and security and, to that end, to take effective collective measures for the prevention and removal of threats to peace and to bring about by peaceful means and in conformity with the principles of justice and international law adjustments or settlements of international disputes or situations. Yesterday, a rear window of opportunity opened up for dialogue. As we convene here in the General Assembly, negotiators from both sides are holding talks in Belarus. This offers a ray of hope. We pray that these talks will calm down tempers and pave way to peace. Excellencies, dear colleagues, the General Assembly with its 193 member states represents the collective conscience of humanity. The strength of this assembly is rooted in its moral authority. Let us demonstrate that moral courage and use today's debate not to whip up rhetoric, not to whip up war rhetoric, but to give peace a chance. Let us ignite the fire of love, humanity, compassion and hope. Guns are better off when noted. Let peace prevail. I thank you.
I now give the floor to the Secretary-General of the United Nations, His Excellency Antonio Guterres.
Mr. President of the General Assembly, Excellencies! The fighting in Ukraine must stop. It's raging across the country from air, land and sea. It must stop now. Russian missiles and their bombardments have been pounding Ukrainian cities day and night. The capital, Kyiv, is encircled from all sides. In the face of the continuing attacks, Kyiv's 3 million residents are being forced to seek safety in their homes, improvised bomb shelters and the city's subways. The Ukrainian government has distributed a meaningful number of arms to the population with the stated objective to participate in the defense of the country. According to NHCR, half a million Ukrainians have fled across the country's borders. Although Russian strikes are reportedly largely targeting Ukrainian military facilities, we have credible accounts of residential buildings, critical civilian infrastructure and other non-military targets sustaining heavy damage. This escalating violence, which is resulting in civilian deaths, including children, is totally unacceptable. Enough is enough. Soldiers need to move back to their barracks and leaders need to move to peace. Civilians must be protected. International humanitarian and human rights law must be upheld. The sovereignty, independence and territorial integrity of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders must be respected in line with General Assembly resolutions. Mr. President, we are facing a tragedy for Ukraine but also a major regional crisis with potentially disastrous implications for us all. Yesterday, Russian nuclear forces were put on high alert. This is a chilling development. The mere idea of a nuclear conflict is simply unconceivable. Nothing can justify the use of nuclear weapons. Mr. President, we face what could easily become Europe's worst humanitarian and refugee crisis in decades, with the numbers of refugees and internally displaced multiplying by the minute. I am grateful for the compassion, generosity and solidarity of Ukraine's neighbors who are taking in those seeking safety. It is important that this solidarity is extended without any discrimination based on race, religion or ethnicity. The neighboring countries will need all our support in the days and weeks to come. The United Nations will continue to assist with these efforts. Mr. President, on Saturday, I spoke with President Zelensky and assured him that the United Nations would not abandon the Ukrainian people and conveyed our determination to enhance humanitarian assistance. Even before the events of the past week, the UN was providing some 3 million people on both sides of the contact line with humanitarian assistance. The United Nations is now working 24 times 7 to assess humanitarian needs and scale up the delivery of lifesaving support to many more people desperate for protection and shelter, particularly women and children, elderly people and those with disabilities. We are fully committed to staying and delivering for everyone affected by this deadly conflict across the country. Some of our personnel are expanding existing programs and others are preparing new operations to get help to those who need it fast. I want to highlight three concrete actions. First, I've allocated 20 million US dollars from the Central Emergency Response Fund to support emergency operations along the contact line in the eastern oblasts of Donetsk and Luhansk and in other parts of the country. These will allow us to help more vulnerable people get the basics, shelter, food, water and else care as soon as possible. Second, I have appointed Amin Awad as the UN Crisis Coordinator for Ukraine. He will liaise with the government and with all relevant actors on the ground, supported by the resident humanitarian coordinator and the UN country team. At the same time, we are bringing together partners in and outside the country and searching personnel into the country. Third, tomorrow we will launch two coordinated emergency appeals for Ukraine and the region. One that addresses escalating humanitarian needs inside the country, including rising internal displacement, and another that responds to the needs of people crossing international borders to seek refuge in countries neighboring Ukraine. As we ramp up our efforts, it is essential that the safety and security of UN and associated personnel in Ukraine are protected in accordance with international law and that humanitarian access to vulnerable people and communities is guaranteed. I call on all sides to uphold their obligations to allow freedom of movement of humanitarian personnel and to facilitate safe, rapid and unimpeded passage of humanitarian relief. I also urge the international community to mobilize in support of our funding appeals to address the needs of all those displaced by this crisis, as well as other vulnerable groups whose numbers will only grow as the fighting escalates. Mr. President, humanitarian aid is vital, but it is not a solution. It is simply treating the worst impacts of the conflict. The only true solution is peace. The attack on Ukraine challenges international law and the multilateral system rooted in the UN Charter. Some of the possible consequences of a worsening conflict are terrifying to contemplate. Regional tensions are rising. The latest security measures underline the high stakes for all. The economic repercussions of the crisis will have widespread impact, and I count on every member state to live up to the principles of the Charter. Mr. President, the guns are talking now, but the passive dialogue must always remain open. It's never too late to engage in good-faced negotiations and to address all issues peacefully. I hope that the direct talks now taking place between Ukrainian and Russian delegations will produce not only an immediate halt to the fighting but also a path towards a diplomatic solution. I welcome and encourage all peaceful efforts to end the bloodshed and halt this conflict. I thank the countries who have offered to host and facilitate negotiations. The United Nations is ready to support such efforts. Mr. President, war is not the answer. It is death, human suffering, senseless destruction and then immense destruction and then immense destruction from the real challenges facing humanity. The climate crisis and biodiversity loss, vitally needed socio-economic recovery from the pandemic, healing the divides of race and gender and so many other pressing 21st century challenges. Humanity cannot afford to be locked in a mindset that dredges up the worst of past centuries. We need to look forward as United Nations to overcome the scourge of war. We need to focus on solving problems, not making them worse. In cities around the world, people are taking to the streets and demanding an end to war. People in Ukraine want and need peace, and I believe people in the Russian Federation do too. We need peace now. Thank you.
I thank the Secretary-General for his statement. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Ukraine.
Mr. President, Secretary-General.
Мистер Президент, Диссертатор Генерального Президента. For the first time since the United Nations was born, there is a full-fledged war in the center of Europe. Everyone in this hall and everyone in the world knows that Russia, and Russia alone, started this invasion, now facilitated by Belarus. This war was not provoked. It was chosen by someone who is right now sitting in the bunker. We know what happened with the person who sat in the bunker in Berlin in May 1945. Before I continue with my formal statement, I would like to switch to Russian and invite you to put on the headphones. Because I would like to read from the screenshot of the smartphone of a killed Russian soldier. That's an actual screenshot from someone who is dead already.
Леш, ты как? Почему так долго не отвечаешь? Вы точно на учениях? - спрашивает мать убитого солдата. За моменты перед тем, как он был убит. Мама, я уже не в Крыму. Не на учениях. А где? Папа спрашивает, можно ли тебе послать посылку. Так какую посылку, мам? Что ты говоришь такое? Что случилось? Мама, я на Украине. Тут настоящая война. Мне страшно. Мы бьем по всем городам. Подряд. Даже по мирным жителям. Нам сказали, что они нас будут приветствовать. А они кидаются под нашу технику и не дают проехать. Называют нас фашистами. Мама, мне очень тяжело. In several moments, he was killed.
Imagine, if you wanna just visualize the magnitude of the tragedy, you have to imagine next to you, next to every nameplate of every single country in this General Assembly, more than 30 souls of killed Russian soldiers already. Next to every name of every single country in this assembly, 30 plus killed Russian soldiers. Hundreds of killed Ukrainians. Dozens of killed children. And it goes on and on and on. So just imagine those killed people next to you when you will listen to my formal statement. Big militarized power seeking for geopolitical greatness has launched a full-fledged military offensive against a smaller neighbor aimed at invading the country. Deadly airstrikes dropped on civilians' heads across the entire country and the Russian troops crossed Ukraine's borders from the territory of Russia, Belarus, and the occupied parts of Ukraine's Donbass and Crimea. Does it remind you of something, doesn't it? Indeed. Very clear parallels could be drawn with the beginning of the Second World War too. And the Russia's course of action is very similar to what their spiritual mentors from the Third Reich employed on the Ukrainian land 80 years ago. Just one, the most recent example. Example of human sufferings. Example of war crime. As all of us were on our way to the General Assembly today, the Russian army shelled with Grad multiple rocket launcher systems the residential areas of the city of Kharkiv. The second biggest in Ukraine. Innocent civilians have been killed and wounded. The exact numbers is very difficult to estimate because of the warfare, while the negotiations are still underway at the border with Belarus. We therefore express our gratitude for overwhelming support that made this decision on the emergency session possible. We are grateful to the President of the General Assembly for his taking care of this idea well in advance. We appreciate the engagements engagement of the UN Secretary General, who has taken a very strong stance in support of peace, in support of the UN Charter. We have been prompted to call for an emergency special session as the level of threat to the global security has been equated to that of the Second World War. Or even higher, following Putin's order to put an alert Russian nuclear forces. What a madness! If he wants to kill himself, he doesn't need to use nuclear arsenal. He has to do what the guy in Berlin did in a bunker in May 1945. The Security Council addressed the issue of the Russian war against Ukraine, and the decision was not adopted due to the obvious reason. The country attempting to occupy Ukraine since 2014 has occupied the seat of the Council's permanent member since 1991. Therefore, we do not accept the Russian logic that the Security Council was unable to act due to one-sided and unbalanced approach. The only guilty party is the Russian Federation. Distinguished delegates, Russia uses all its military potential to attack Ukraine and has begun redeploying reserve units on the border with Ukraine. It fires cruise and ballistic missiles at cities, attacks with aviation tanks and artillery, sensor subversion and reconnaissance groups, which mark residential buildings in preparation for the air attacks. Russia's missiles are now aimed at destroying the infrastructure objects. They targeted the radioactive waste disposal site near Kiev, the fuel base in the town of Vasiliviv, that is effectively a Kiev suburb. The objects of logistic infrastructure, including bridges, airports and water reservoirs, remain among the targets. Such towns as Shostya and Stanitsa-Lugansk and Nielugansk are now nearly destroyed, as well as residential buildings in and around Kiev and Kharkiv. The Russian forces seized the Chernobyl nuclear power station at the part of southern Kherson region, including the North Crimean Canal. Due to the active moving of Russian heavy militaries through the Chernobyl exclusion zone, the radiation level has increased rapidly. In the Black Sea, Russian warships deliberately attacked two civil vessels under the flags of Panama and Moldova, approaching Ukraine. These constitutes a flagrant violation of the international law of the sea. Incredibly, one of the vessels had the Russian crew. Still, it was attacked by the Russians. Russians keep attacking kindergartens and orphanages, thus committing war crimes and violating the wrong statute. Hospitals and mobile medical aid brigades are also targeted by the Russian shelling and the sabotage groups working in Ukrainian cities and towns. The Russian military fired on ambulance crews in the areas of Zaporizhzhya and Kiev. In Akhtirka district of Sumy region, Russian tanks shot down a bus with civilians. Later, the Russian military did not allow ambulances on the spot. As of today, 352 people, including 16 children, were killed on the Ukrainian side and 2,040 Ukrainians, including 45 children, wounded during the first five days of the Russian invasion. And this number is growing nonstop. I have already told about the morning shelling in Kharkiv, and we cannot really estimate at this moment how many were killed. In response, Ukraine has activated its right for self-defense according to Article 51 of the UN Charter. The Russian troops are suffering losses: aircrafts, helicopters, tanks, trucks, personnel. The aggressive forces have already lost more than 5,000 in manpower during the first days of aggression. Президенты, Диссертаторы Генеральной Ассамблеи должны быть голосовыми в требовании от Российской Федерации остановить свою offensive against Ukraine. In recognizing Russian actions as an act of aggression against sovereign and independent state, in demanding from Russia to immediately, completely and unconditionally withdraw its forces from the territory of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders, in demanding from the Russian Federation to reverse the decision related to the status of certain areas of Donetsk and Lugansk regions of Ukraine, in demanding full compliance with the provisions of international humanitarian law, the General Assembly should also be clear with regard to the treacherous role of Belarus and its involvement in aggression of the Russian Federation against Ukraine. Distinguished members of the General Assembly, what is happening now in Ukraine has already had the security and humanitarian implications for all of you. Immediately for Europe, a bit later for the rest, including in terms of food security, energy security, financial markets, collapse of the economies. Last September, my president said, while delivering his statement at the high-level segment of the 76th session of the General Assembly, and I quote: "I understand that criticism of the UN is often heard, but we criticize ourselves." End of quote. "If we fail to respond now, we will face much more than criticism. We will face oblivion. It must not happen. Now it is time to act, time to help Ukraine, that is paying now the ultimate price for freedom and security of itself and of the world. If Ukraine does not survive, international peace will not survive. If Ukraine does not survive, the United Nations will not survive. Have no illusions. If Ukraine does not survive, we cannot be surprised if democracy fails next. Now we can save Ukraine, save the United Nations, save democracy and defend the values we believe in and that Ukrainians are fighting for and paying with their lives." The Russian delegate will speak shortly. Putin has done everything to legitimize the Russian presence in the United Nations. But I wonder if the Russian presence in the United Nations has ever been legitimate. I wonder if ever this whole, this assembly voted in accordance with paragraph 2 of Article 4 on admission of the Russian Federation to the United Nations either in December 1991 or in January 1992 or wherever thereafter. I want to ask the delegates whose countries voted for admission of the Russian delegation to the United Nations to raise their hand to confirm that Russia was admitted to the United Nations according to the Charter. Please, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, please raise your hand if your country voted in the formal session of the General Assembly in reply to the letter by President Yeltsin dated December 24, 1991, when he told the United Nations that Russia would like to be a continiator state of the demolished Soviet Union. Anyone? Shall I put my glasses if my vision fails me and I don't see any hand raised? Any country? Anyone voted for Russian membership? I leave you with that and think about it when you listen to the Russian delegate.
Я благодарю distinguished representative of Ukraine. Я дам сейчас шум по distinguished representative of the Russian Federation.
Господин Президент, господин Генеральный секретарь, уважаемые коллеги! В последние дни украинский сюжет доминирует в информационном поле и занимает центральное место в Совете Безопасности ООН и теперь и на Генассамблее. При этом действия России перевираются и передергиваются, обрастают огромным количеством самых невероятных небылиц и фейков с задействованием СМИ и соцсетей. Поэтому я хочу сегодня подробно остановиться на причинах возникшей кризисной ситуации и ее возможных последствий. Хотел бы подчеркнуть, что корень сегодняшнего кризиса вокруг Украины в действиях самой Украины, занимавшейся многолетним саботажем своих прямых обязательств по Минскому комплексу мер. Еще недавно, совсем недавно, существовала надежда на то, что в Киеве одумаются и все-таки выполнят то, под чем подписались в 2015 году. Для этого прежде всего был нужен прямой диалог с Донецком и Луганском. Однако, очередное подтверждение высшим руководством страны, неготовностью Украины к такому диалогу, к шагам по предоставлению Донбассу особого статуса предусмотрено Минскими соглашениями, причем активно поддержаны западными покровителями Киева, окончательно убедило нас в том, что мы просто не имеем права заставлять жителей Донбасса... that we simply do not have the right to make Donbass's residents suffer further. Since Ukrainian provocation against Donbass in February not only stopped, but intensified, the leadership of the UNRWA and DNR asked us for permission to provide military support in accordance with the two-sided agreements on cooperation with the ones signed simultaneously with their recognition, which became a logical step, which is a consequence of the endlessly aggressive actions of the Ukrainian regime. Ukrainian government, which actively armed and armored a number of countries in recent times, remained confused about the fact that with the blessing of Donbass survivors, they could achieve military solution to the Donbass problem. Otherwise, it is difficult to explain the existing, substantial intensification of attacks and diversionary acts on the Russian territory, which I mentioned. Donbassites and Luganskites were still forced to hide in rooms. The tide of escape went on in Russia. The character of the provocation of the Ukrainian Armed Forces has not changed. However, our Western colleagues did not want to notice this, repeating the Ukrainian tales about the fact that Donbassites are shooting themselves almost not. In general, the suffering of Donbassites and Western countries are gradually ignored. For a week, in the Security Council of the Union, they did not find a word of remorse and suffering for Donbassites and Luganskites. Such a feeling that these four million people for them is as if they do not exist. In conclusion, before the endless threat against Donbassites, DNR and UNRWA, and also the absence of a prospect of solving the Donbass problem in the context of the Minsk Pact, President Putin took the decision to carry out a special military operation in Donbass. The occupation of Ukraine does not fall into our plans. The purpose of this special operation is to protect people who have been under the eight years of lies and genocide on the Ukrainian regime. To do so, we need to implement demilitarization and denazification of Ukraine. We will also strive to punish those who have committed numerous and bloody crimes against peaceful citizens, including citizens of the Russian Federation. This decision was taken in accordance with Article fifty-one of the Union Law, with sanctions of the Russian Federation and in the implementation of the Agreement on Peace and Understanding with DNR and UNRWA. I also wanted to remind you of the principle of sovereignty and territorial integrity of states, which is being violated by Ukraine today. According to the Declaration of Principles of International Rights concerning the relationship of friends between peoples, adopted in two thousand nine hundred and seventy years, it should abide in respect of states, I cite, "upholding the principle of equality and self-identification of peoples, and following the one that represents, without distinction of race, religion, or color of skin, the entire people of this territory." End of citation. Today's government of Ukraine is not one of them. Moreover, in the course of the special military operation, Russia has the right to self-defense from the regime striving for the restoration of access to nuclear weapons. The president of Ukraine directly stated this on eighteen February in the Munich Conference, and this, his statement, I remember, was greeted with applause and attendance at the conference. At the same time, Ukraine is looking for a place in NATO where the leader of the Fifth Fleet is acting, and it has territorial claims against Russia. So by acting in Article fifty-one of the Union Law, Russia not only protects itself from the threat of nationalism, but also restores the action, goals, and principles of the Union Law on Donbass and Ukraine, provides for the fulfillment of the main task of the World Organization, the prevention of a new world war. Unfortunately, I am forced to point out the extremely negative role that the Western colleagues played in everything. Instead of trying to make Kiev perform its obligations, they openly armored Ukraine, repeating a lost, some meaningless mantra about the fact that their obligations for the Minsk Pact are not being fulfilled by Russia, which, as we have repeatedly emphasized, is even not their side. Furthermore, our Western colleagues, without hesitation, overloaded this country with weapons, directed there instructors, practically forcing Ukrainians, who were clinging to the line of confrontation, a one-twenty-thousand warrior contingent to the armored provocation against Donbass. Good colleagues, discussing today's topic, it is not allowed to go beyond the wider context, which caused the current crisis in Ukraine. In two thousand and eight, President Putin, on the NATO summit in Bukarest, warned that the members of the Southern Atlantic Alliance should think three times before signing with arrogance that Ukraine and Greece will be in NATO. He, President Putin, referred to this as a great compromise, which was given to Germany and France, which replaced the American proposal to announce immediately about the provision of the Ukrainian and Russian plans of action for membership. Then there was an adventure of the president of NATO, President Saakashvili, of the president of NATO, Saakashvili, in Greece, which, despite the facts, accused Russia. In two thousand and fourteen, a bloody and anti-constitutional move was made in Kiev, in the result of which, to the power of the authorities, nationalists and radicals took the risk of building a counter-Russia base in place of Ukraine and its arrival in NATO. I will return to this topic. For us, the entrance of Ukraine into NATO is a red line, first of all, from the military strategy. The installation of NATO infrastructure in this country would force us to take such measures, which would put Russia and NATO on the verge of conflict. Therefore, in December two thousand and twenty-first, we suggested that the United States and NATO conclude agreements providing Russia with guarantees of security. However, our American and NATO hands were highly resistant to this. We suggested discussing important but secondary questions, not removing our concerns. Furthermore, we refused to answer the question of how the declared in the documents of the BSE freedom of election of the alliance is combined with the principles of security inequality. Good colleagues, most of you may have a question, what do we do now and what role can the Union play in regulating the Ukrainian crisis? It is believed that the Union might and should play its role, help to soften the positions of various players, eliminate the reasons for confrontation. The key role here, according to the Union Law, should play the Security Council of the Union. However, our partners are not willing to discuss this issue calmly. That is why the Russian Federation voted against anti-Russian and anti-Ukrainian projects of the resolution of the Security Council. Why anti-Russian, I think it is not necessary to explain, just look at it. Why anti-Ukrainian, because this document, without doubt, opposes the core interests of the Ukrainian people, because it is trying to save and strengthen the Ukraine system of power, which led this country to a tragedy for at least eight years. The main reason for our negative voting is not that it was in the project, but that there was nothing. If the authors had tried to deny it, at least remotely, in the light of a balanced document, they would not have left questions, which cannot be forgotten, in the context of the Ukrainian problem. In particular, it was left to the question, how the newly-coming to the power, in the result of the non-constitutional move in Kiev in February two thousand and fourteen, Maidan's gang had organized a war against the residents of the west of the country, shooting peaceful apartments with guns and the system of gunfire, and throwing bombs at Donbassites and Luganskites. It was left to the question, how the Ukrainian government, in the absence of Western defenders, gradually and cynically left from the fulfillment of the Minsk agreements. At the same time, the Ukrainian killers, first of all, radical and neo-nationalist battalions, were methodically, day by day, shooting the homes of DNR and UNRWA, killing women, children, and elderly. This continues today. How can we not mention the bloodshed of crimes committed by Nazi pilots over these eight years? The dead protesters protesting against Maidan in Odessa. The peaceful protesters on Maidan, the unknown snipers. The investigation of both these tragedies, Maidan's regime deliberately covered it. At the same time, the victims of the Odessa tragedy are known and hide it. Alternative investigations and acknowledgment of the own snipers are meaningless, proving that Boni on the border of Nезависимости was a provocation of the leaders of Maidan. We specially held in the past year a informal meeting of the Security Council of the Union on both these topics, to give colleagues a larger information on this matter. However, in response, in the best case, we heard from Western partners only stamped cliches of Russian propaganda. What text of the resolution on the Ukrainian issue can be omitted in many of the topics? It would be necessary to include in the project and a honest assessment of the role in the spreading of the Ukrainian crisis of our Western colleagues, who not only stood behind the Maidan move, but actually gave Kiev a carte blanche on any actions and steps, unthinkable for any civilized state. Here, it is the discrimination of the Russian language and, in turn, Russian speakers, and the humiliation of the scapegoats of Hitler in conjunction with the prohibition of the true heroes of Ukraine, who had liberated her from Nazism and created religious holes in this country. Spoilers about the prosperity of democracy in Ukraine, Maidan's powers and nationalists were dealing with innocent murders of political opponents, following opposition, closing opposition channels, where it is possible to emphasize, at least objectively, objective information. Six of these channels were only closed after Zeleninsk. How to forget the loading of weapons of Ukraine, which then killed peaceful residents of Donbass? The responsibility for what is happening now rests not only on the Ukrainian leadership today, but also on our Western colleagues. Good colleagues, I would also attract your attention to that, that around the Russian special military operation, a puzzle of lies, fakes, and disinformation is being formed, in particular, the destroyed Armed Forces of Ukraine and the nationalists of Donbass, Western media, now, most frequently, without hesitation, are giving the consequences of our military operation in Ukraine. We constantly hear rumors and fakes about the electoral bombing of Ukrainian cities, hospitals, schools, and childcare facilities. Russian Army does not threaten peaceful citizens of Ukraine, does not shoot peaceful objects. In cities that were invaded by Russian Armed Forces, and these cities live in the normal mode, there are functional objects of life and security, transport is working, and the local administration supports the order. This applies to the Chernobyl Electric Station, which is patrolled by the Russian Armed Forces and the Ukrainian police, which is there. Chernobyl also functions in a normal mode. The threat now for the people of Ukraine represent Ukrainian nationalists, who have taken advantage of the people of Ukraine and are covering them like a living shield. There are a lot of witnesses, which are spread to the simple Ukrainians, about the fact that nationalists, not taking advantage of their protests, install heavy equipment and the system of gunfire in residential apartments. This is a devastating violation of international humanitarian rights, which should get the appropriate punishment. By nature, it is the same tactic that terrorists use. All the responsibility for possible consequences rests on Maidan's regime. The people of Ukraine are threatened by the uncontrollable destruction of radical powers by all who wish, including the specially released from prison criminal, the weapon that is already fired in the hands of robbers and marauders. In social networks, enough proof is available to the kidnappers of Kiev and other cities. This demonstrates a foolish attitude of the Ukrainian government to its women. We just received a letter from an Ukrainian public organization, Institute of Political and Social Security, named Irina Bereshnoy, which, over the eight years, informs the international structures about how the Ukrainian nation was founded and firmly strengthened neo-Nazism on Ukraine, and how it was supported and supported at a national level. A short citation, "Today, apogees of the neo-Nazis in Ukraine, by orders of the authorities in prison, sentenced to crimes, murder, robbery, and assault, only in Kiev, all who wish, without any documents, issued twenty-five thousand automatics. There were riots, robberies, and marauders. The so-called "producers of the territorial defense of Kiev" shot a car at a family in Kudryna with three children, their parents and a girl were immediately gone, two children in hospital, two children in a difficult condition in hospital. The president, after the non-constitutional move of power in February two thousand and fourteen, Turchinov called all the non-righteous citizens to cut the street. That is, to kill Russians all over the country. This is in the last passage on the Ukrainian two thousand and nineteen, which says that in Ukraine, there are sixteen, practically seventeen percent of Russians, on the reality of it, far more. Now, in social networks, a social war is being organized against Russia. Since there are no social networks to show the destruction of the Russian civilian infrastructure, it is so that Ukrainian strikes and mischievous explosions are being made, as well as videos and videos from Donbass, which record, in part, the crimes of Ukrainian nationalists. Furthermore, in social networks, social networks are filled with full and teaching of the way to remove fakes, encouraging our military operation. Today, one point two million of such fakes are being played on Ukrainian social networks. And that, which today was counted as a bad example, the passage of a mother to her son, a military officer, emerged also from the same social networks, and this is definitely known. We didn't support the project of the decision to let this subject into the Security Council of the Union, at the General Assembly. At the same time, we were commanded by the fact that such a maneuver, by nature, suggests us to write down that the Security Council is not capable of realizing its main responsibility for supporting the international security of the world. At the same time, there was even no sign of trying to find a constructive solution in the Council. An attempt to avoid the position of Russia, ignoring it, opposes the very foundation of the Union Law. It is not necessary to overdrive such schemes, but try to find points of confrontation, as we try to avoid, our Western partners. In particular, when they ignored our legitimate concerns in relation to NATO politics and the violation of the basic principles of the BSE on security inequality. In conclusion, Mr. President, I want to say that Russia did not start the military actions. These military actions began with Ukraine against its own citizens, Donbassites, and against those not agreeing with the military power. Russia ends this war. Thank you.
I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the European Union.
Mr. President, I have the honor to speak on behalf of the European Union and its member states. North Macedonia, Montenegro, Albania, Bosnia and Herzegovina, Iceland, Norway, Republic of Moldova, Georgia, San Marino, Andorra, Monaco, and Liechtenstein align themselves with this statement. Mr. President, I want to thank you for convening us here today and for the Secretary General to be here and for all of you colleagues being here. It is very important that the facts are heard and fully understood, and that this body is able to take the appropriate decisions after the fact that the Security Council, thanks to the veto by one country alone, stopped this council from taking that decision. Let me start by expressing the European Union's full solidarity and support to Ukraine and its people, who are courageously fighting an unprovoked and unjustified military aggression. its people, who are courageously fighting an unprovoked and unjustified military aggression from Russia. Since our meeting here in the General Assembly last week, the situation has dramatically escalated, despite tireless diplomatic efforts, including at the highest level. Russia has decided to turn its back to peace, to the rules-based international order as defined intra-ali in the UN Charter, to diplomacy and to the international community. Russia's military attack against Ukraine has already caused an alarming number of deaths, injured, internally displaced, and refugees. We condemn in the strongest possible terms the unprovoked invasion of Ukraine by armed forces of the Russian Federation in violation of Ukraine's independence, sovereignty, and territorial integrity. We also condemn the involvement of Belarus in this aggression against Ukraine, and we call on both Russia and Belarus to abide by their international obligations. We're also alarmed by Russia's raising of the nuclear alert level. We call on Russia to de-escalate and to immediately return to the previous alert level of its nuclear arsenal and to avoid any actions that could risk the safety or security of the nuclear power plants in Ukraine, a non-nuclear weapons state under the Nuclear Nonproliferation Treaty. Russia bears full responsibility for this aggression and the resulting destruction and loss of life. We demand from Russia to cease its military operations immediately and unconditionally and to withdraw all forces and military equipment from the entire territory of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders. We further call on Russia to engage earnest in dialogue with a view to political and diplomatic solution. Russia's actions grossly violate international law and are in clear breach of the UN Charter and the OSCE Helsinki Financial Act, as well as Russia's specific commitments to respect Ukraine's sovereignty and territorial integrity under the Budapest Memorandum of 1994. This is arguably the biggest aggression in Europe since the end of the Second World War. It follows similar Russian aggression against its neighbors in 2008 and 2014. We underscore our firm support for the sovereignty and territorial integrity of Georgia and of the Republic of Moldova, and we are closely monitoring the situation in the region. This assembly has the responsibility immediately and effectively to acknowledge and address Russia's actions. Failing to do so will erode trust to the rules-based global order with the UN at its core and the UN Charter itself. It would send the wrong message to perpetrators of such aggression and aggravate similar risks to other UN member states in the region and beyond. We stand firmly by Ukraine and its people. We deplore the loss of life and human suffering. This is a dire humanitarian catastrophe, and humanitarian needs are rapidly increasing. With the toll of IDPs and refugees rising, humanitarian support is a priority in the wider package of EU support offered to Ukraine in these trying days. The UN's member states are providing urgently needed humanitarian assistance to the Ukrainian population. Ukraine has activated the Union's civil protection mechanism and is receiving urgently needed supplies from EU member states. In addition, the Republic of Moldova, to which more than 60 000 Ukrainians have fled, has requested and received EU humanitarian support in dealing with the human catastrophe caused deliberately by the Russian Federation's invasion of Ukraine. We call on Russia and Russia-backed armed formations to respect international law, including international humanitarian law. Civilians and civilian infrastructures must be protected and humanitarian access should be secured. We call on Russia and Russia-backed armed formations to allow safe and unhindered humanitarian access and stop their disinformation campaign and cyberattacks. We strongly condemn the involvement of Belarus in this aggression against Ukraine and call on it to immediately stop action and to abide by its international obligations. We recall our unwavering support for the independence, sovereignty, and territorial integrity of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders, and we call on all UN members not to recognize the two self-proclaimed separatist entities. The EU has reacted swiftly and decisively to Russia's recognition of Ukraine's self-proclaimed separatist entities and the invasion of Ukraine by adopting restrictive measures. We intend to take such measures against Belarus. Mr. President, let us be clear on this. We firmly believe that the use of force and coercion to change borders has no place in the 21st century. Let us recall that the UN Charter prohibits both the threat and the use of force against the territorial integrity or political independence of any state or in any other manner inconsistent with the purposes of the United Nations. Tensions and conflict should be resolved through dialogue and diplomacy. The EU, together with like-minded partners, have been united in making unprecedented efforts to achieve a diplomatic solution. But Russia has not reciprocated these efforts and instead opted unilaterally for a grave and premeditated escalation. With this one-sided step, Russia is further isolating itself. We are today at a crucial and historical moment. Too many times in the past, the international community has been blind or too slow in front of unfolding tragedies. Entire generations in many places around the world, many of you representing them, have paid and are still paying the price of inaction. We cannot make the same mistake again. We have to take action. After Russia's veto in the Security Council last week, the General Assembly has the responsibility to send a strong and united message on the need for Russia to immediately and unconditionally cease its military operations, withdraw its troops, and opt for genuine dialogue. We call on Russia to avoid, in particular, any action that places the safety and security of Ukraine's nuclear and radioactive waste installations at risk. The people of Ukraine and the whole world are watching us and counting on us and will judge us on the decisions that we will take here in this special emergency session. And it's our duty and responsibility for all of us to do our utmost to defend the UN Charter and the international order. We therefore hope that this assembly will massively support the resolution tabled by Ukraine and its partners. The EU and its member states will continue to do their utmost to protect the integrity of the rules-based international system, which is key to our collective security, and we call on all UN member states to do the same. On our side, we will continue to stand by Ukraine, support its democratically elected institutions and representatives and its people, including through additional political, financial, humanitarian, and logistical support. I thank you very much, colleagues. I thank you very much, Mr. President. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Denmark on behalf of the Nordic Baltic countries.
I have the honor to speak on behalf of the eight Nordic Baltic countries: Estonia, Finland, Iceland, Latvia, Lithuania, Norway, Sweden, and my own country Denmark. Mr. President, on the night of 24 February, the Russian leadership decided to attack Ukraine. Let me be clear: we condemn in the strongest terms possible the invasion of Ukraine by the Russian Federation. People around the world are watching with horror the tragedy unfolding in Ukraine, a member state of this organization, a member of this community of nations. We are struck with a profound sense of injustice and a profound sympathy with the Ukrainian people who are fighting for their country, their cities, their homes, their families, their lives, their freedom, and their future. The Russian leadership's aggression and brutal armed attack is in clear violation of Ukraine's sovereignty and territorial integrity within its international recognized borders. The Russian leadership's actions gravely violate international law and the principles of the UN Charter. They are an attack on this organization, and this cannot stand. Last week, the Russian leadership decided it would erase Ukraine's right to determine its own future. This cannot stand. Mr. President, Russia counted on the world to remain silent, but we are acting. And on this day, and until peace prevails and every Ukrainian can safely return to their homes, we stand with Ukraine. The devastating consequences of this aggression, not only for Europe but globally, cannot be overstated. Russian aggression against Ukraine will have global and long-term negative consequences, challenging the rules-based international order if we let it go unanswered. In the time ahead, we fear increased suffering, with potentially large number of casualties and extensive destruction of civilian infrastructure. We see fighting unfolding in and around urban areas, and we are deeply concerned about the long-term cumulative and protracted harm to the civilian population. Mr. President, we will continue to look at every single instrument in our toolbox as a matter of urgency. Sanctions have already been enacted to cripple Putin's ability to finance this war machine. And likewise, the role of the Lukashenko regime and Belarus in enabling the attack on Ukraine also demands a firm response. Nordic Baltic countries have been delivering financial, humanitarian, and military assistance to the people of Ukraine, and many of our partners and friends around the globe have joined us. Every nation must look at how to further support Ukraine. Mr. President, during the days we have watched with horror broadcasted images of families separated, children sheltering in the safety of the Kiev subway system, kindergartens destroyed by Russian ordinances, and the ruins of bombarded residential buildings in the center of the capital of Ukraine. We are outraged by indiscriminate attacks on civilians in this unlawful and immoral war of conquest that serves no purpose and no principle but the naked quest for power and territory. This cannot stand. Russia must respect international humanitarian law and human rights law. Full and unhindered humanitarian access must be guaranteed. Civilians must be protected. We call on Russia to stop this senseless war, and we echo the plea of the Secretary-General. We demand an immediate ceasefire, and we urge Russia to withdraw all its forces from Ukraine and return genuinely to the path of dialogue and negotiation. Mr. President, let me be clear: every civilian death, every war crime will be recorded, and we will ensure that the perpetrators of these heinous crimes are held accountable and brought to justice. History has its eyes on us. Every legal avenue available will be used to hold the aggressor to account. Ukraine has sent a request to the International Court of Justice on Russia's erroneous and absurd allegations of genocide in Ukraine, which the Russian Federation has cynically used as a false pretext for its invasion. The International Criminal Court's prosecutor has also noted that he is monitoring Russia's invasion of Ukraine and has jurisdiction to prosecute war crimes and crimes against humanity. The prosecutor's office may and will exercise its jurisdiction over and investigate any act of genocide, crimes against humanity, or war crime committed within the territory of Ukraine, as Ukraine has accepted the court's jurisdiction. We fully support the ICC's monitoring of the situation. Colleagues, the rules-based international order, which governs how states interact with one another, was put in place drawing from the horrible lessons of two world wars, promising one another that future generations would be saved from the scourge of war. The attack on Ukraine, the Russian invasion of Ukraine, is a direct assault on the principles and purposes of the UN Charter. This cannot stand. The matter is now in the hands of the General Assembly, where one veto cannot overrule the UN membership, where the power and legitimacy is manifested in numbers. Russia's shameful use of the veto on a matter it bears full responsibility for is completely unacceptable. As a permanent member of the Security Council, Russia has a special responsibility for maintaining peace and security, not to violate the very principles of the UN Charter. The latest meetings of the Council demonstrated the need for reform. It demonstrated who had the firmness and valor to defend the UN Charter. No country can grow and thrive in isolation. Russia knows this. The General Assembly has the power to send a firm message to Putin, and what we say today and how we vote on the resolution presented will make a difference on the ground in Ukraine and to the Ukrainian people. They will be watching us, hoping that the world will come in on the side of the UN Charter and our promise of never again. Colleagues, Russia's unlawful and brutal armed attack on Ukraine will affect and impact everyone. And if we do not join our forces to turn back this tide today, we will be even less equipped to deal with similar crises and crimes in the future, wherever, on whichever continent they occur. Over the last week, we have heard powerful statements from representatives of every continent on this planet, from Africa to Asia, from Europe to the Americas, that Russia's behavior towards a fellow member of the United Nations cannot stand, and we will hear more today. And to those who still refer to two parties to a conflict, we echo the words of a protester who had written on her sign: «If Russia stops fighting, there will be no more war. If Ukrainians stop fighting, there will be no more Ukraine». That is the simple reality before us, that is the simple truth. The world will hold Russia and Belarus accountable for their actions, Russia as the main aggressor, Belarus as the enabler. I thank you, Mr. President.
I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of France.
Monsieur le Président, la Russie poursuit jour après jour son œuvre de destruction en Ukraine. À ses actes brutaux et criminels, s'ajoute une rhétorique dangereuse qui alimente davantage les tensions. La Russie conduit cette agression armée en violation des principes les plus fondamentaux de la Charte des Nations Unies que tous les membres de cette assemblée sont dans l'obligation de respecter. Vendredi, elle s'est opposée seule à une résolution du Conseil de Sécurité copairéné par 82 États. L'Assemblée générale porte aujourd'hui une responsabilité historique, celle de relayer haut et fort la voix des citoyens qui, sur tous les continents et y compris en Russie, demandent l'arrêt immédiat de cette guerre et le retrait de l'armée russe du territoire ukrainien. La France soutient les efforts en cours au sein de cette assemblée pour préparer une résolution demandant à la Russie de mettre un terme à l'agression et de respecter la souveraineté et l'intégrité territoriales de l'Ukraine. Elle appelle tous les États membres de cette assemblée à voter pour ce texte. Au-delà de l'Ukraine, il s'agit de défendre la Charte et la raison d'être des Nations Unies. Soyons clairs: face à l'agression armée contre un peuple, face aux victimes civiles, chaque jour plus nombreuses, face au flot de ceux contraints de tout quitter pour chercher un refuge, nul ne peut détourner le regard. L'abstention n'est pas une option. S'abstenir, c'est consentir à la loi du plus fort. Nous appelons tous les États membres à voter pour la primauté du droit sur la force. Monsieur le Président, la saisine de cette assemblée en session extraordinaire d'urgence ne signifie pas que le Conseil de Sécurité renonce à exercer ses responsabilités. Il se réunira cet après-midi sur la situation humanitaire en Ukraine. La France y portera avec le Mexique un projet de résolution afin de garantir la protection des civils et un accès humanitaire sûr et sans entrave pour répondre aux besoins urgents de la population ukrainienne. La France et ses partenaires de l'Union européenne se tiennent fermement aux côtés du peuple ukrainien. L'Union européenne a déjà annoncé 90 millions d'euros d'aide humanitaire. La France prendra également sa part. Avec ses partenaires, la France est mobilisée pour que la réponse internationale soit à la hauteur de l'agression commise par la Russie. L'Union européenne, dont la France assume la présidence ce semestre, a notamment adopté des mesures visant à bloquer des mesures visant à bloquer l'accès de la banque centrale russe à ses réserves. Elle a également annoncé le financement de matériel de défense au profit de l'Ukraine. Monsieur le Président, la France salue le courage dont fait pleuvre le peuple d'Ukraine. Nous appelons cette assemblée à lui exprimer sans tarder son soutien par l'adoption d'une résolution. Je vous remercie.
I thank the distinguished representative of France. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the United Kingdom.
Mr. Secretary-General, Mr. President, colleagues. On Friday, eighty-one member states supported a resolution in the Security Council to stop the war in Ukraine. Russia was completely isolated in opposing that resolution. Today, we gather in the General Assembly to stand against Russia's illegal attack on Ukraine and its assault on the principles of the UN Charter. The facts are clear. Russia has invaded Ukraine without provocation and without justification. Russia has rained missiles and rockets down on Kyiv, Kharkiv, Odessa, and other cities. The brave men and women of Ukraine are enduring the barrage and have held their cities from Russian invaders. They are fighting for their country, for their continued future as a free and independent But the humanitarian consequences are already immense. We hear of babies born in air raid shelters, children with bomb craters in their kindergartens, and today, news of the shelling of residential areas in Kharkiv. These are indiscriminate attacks on Ukrainian civilians. Seven million Ukrainians are displaced. In short, the scourge of war that our United Nations was created to prevent has been unleashed by Russia on Ukraine. The international response to Russia's aggression has been united and swift. Around the world and here in this building, we must stand together to defend the rules and enforce the accountability that we have built together. If we do not stand up for them now, then the safety of every nation's borders and independence are at risk. That is why we also condemn Belarusian support for Russia's invasion of Ukraine. As the Secretary-General said last week, Russia's actions are violations of the territorial integrity and sovereignty of Ukraine and conflict directly with the principles of the Charter of the United Nations. And as he said today, the only answer is peace. So our message today is simple. We offer our unequivocal support for Ukraine and the Ukrainian people. We call on President Putin to stop this senseless war, and we urge all fellow members of the United Nations to speak up for Ukraine and to defend the Charter. Slava Ukraini.
I thank the distinguished representative of the United Kingdom. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Georgia.
Thank you, Mr. President. My delegation aligns itself with the statement delivered by the representative of the European Union, and in my national capacity, I would like to add the following comment. Excellencies, we have gathered today in an emergency session because the Security Council once again failed us in acting as a guardian of peace and security. So now it is upon us, the General Assembly, where we all have equal rights to vote, to stand up and make it certain that the United Nations delivers on the purpose it was created for. The use of armed force by a UN member against sovereignty, territorial integrity, or political independence of another member state violates Article 2.4 of the UN Charter and constitutes an act of aggression as defined by the Resolution 3314 of this very body adopted by consensus. What we see in Ukraine is an act of aggression on the part of Russia, and we condemn it. Last week, I spoke from this very rostrum about Russia's pattern of behavior against its neighbors. Russia's full-scale military aggression against my country should have served as a wake-up call for all, but alas, it has not been possible to prevent the similar scenario unfolding few years later in Ukraine. Not to repeat myself, let me just say that we in Georgia do know what the toll of war is. We do know what is these disastrous consequences, and that is people, innocent civilians, women and children, who pay the highest price. It is devastating not only for those who live through it but passes down to generations. Let me be clear: core principles enshrined in the UN Charter, the Helsinki Final Act, the Charter of Paris for New Europe, and the commitments taken under the Budapest Memorandum are non-negotiable nor subject to revision by any country, no matter how large or powerful it may be. Territorial acquisition through use of force or a threat to do so is illegal and impermissible. Georgia calls on the Russian Federation to immediately cease its military activities and withdraw all its forces and armaments from Ukraine, allow immediate access to all international humanitarian and human rights mechanisms wherever is needed on the entire territory of Ukraine, reverse the decisions related to the status of integral parts of Ukraine's Donetsk and Luhansk regions and Crimea, and to do so, the same with regard to Georgia: withdraw forces, allow humanitarian access, reverse the status-related decision with regard to the occupied territories. Georgia was among the co-sponsors of the draft Security Council resolution that got vetoed, and we are the co-sponsors of the draft General Assembly resolution that is soon to be considered. This resolution, although it concerns Ukraine, is a watershed moment for all of us, and I would dare say for the future of the rules-based order and our United Nations. So I call on you to vote in favor of the proposed draft, to vote to save the succeeding generations from the scourge of war, to vote for the United Nations. And in conclusion, we welcome the Secretary-General's decision to scale up the United Nations' humanitarian operations in and around Ukraine, and let me once again reiterate Georgia's unwavering support of independence, sovereignty, and territorial integrity of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders, including Crimea and Donbass, and Ukraine's navigational rights in its territorial waters. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Georgia. And now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Poland.
Mr. President, Mr. Secretary-General, distinguished delegates. Poland fully supports the resolution just tabled by Ukraine and calls on each member state to stand firmly behind it. We deeply believe that through this act, we will demonstrate our adherence to the principles enshrined in the UN Charter. Only by upholding those fundamental principles, we can see the truly peaceful and long-term solution to the conflict caused by the Russian aggression in Ukraine. In that sense, the resolution we are about to vote paves the way to a meaningful diplomatic effort to end the atrocities of this war. To achieve peace, Poland, as the current chairmanship in office of the Organization of Security and Cooperation Europe, called yesterday for the immediate ceasefire in Ukraine to let humanitarian organizations deliver assistance. But these appeals for peace are even more urgent when you look at the events in Ukraine from a close-distance perspective. Let me tell you how we Poles see and respond to the horrors of this war as neighbors and friends of Ukraine. There is no doubt that we are confronted with one of the biggest humanitarian crises in Europe since World War II. In the first three days of Russian aggression facilitated by the complicity of the Belarusian regime of Alexander Lukashenko, we witnessed almost more than five hundred thousand people fleeing Ukraine, three hundred thousand of which found refuge in my home country. We keep our borders open. Our diplomatic missions help those who seek refuge in Poland. The nationals of all countries who suffered from Russian aggression or whose life is at risk can seek shelter in my country. And I can tell you, only for the first half of today, we welcome people of one hundred fifty, one hundred twenty-five nationalities fleeing Ukraine to Poland. So that means it concerns us all. The list of these nationalities is too long to read to you, so I just read the first those with more than one hundred nationals fleeing to Poland only today in the morning: Ukraine, Uzbekistan, Nigeria, India, Morocco, Kazakhstan, Pakistan, Afghanistan, Poland, Belarus, Iran, Turkey, Algeria, and Russia. This refuge applies also to the students, which I understand is a serious concern of some colleagues here in the chamber. The students are also welcome to Poland, and they are offered to continue their studies in Poland. We know that some of the missions here in New York were targeted by the disinformation suggesting discriminatory practices at the Polish-Ukrainian border based on race and religion. I can tell you this is a complete lie and is terrible insult to us. Besides giving refuge, Poland delivers to those who suffer a very practical and tangible help. My government organized a special trains for the elderly and mothers with small babies as well as convoys with supplies and medical aid. There are seven thousand beds in twenty hospitals ready for those wounded and sick, and I want to announce that the first Ukrainian refugee babies were born in Poland in the first twenty four, in the last twenty-four hours, and the first lifesaving operations were carried out for the elderly in our hospitals. Poland stands ready to cooperate closely with UNOCHA, International Committee of the Red Cross, and other humanitarian organizations to ease the burden of the civilians targeted by the Russian aggression. But what I am most proud of is the outpour of spontaneous readiness to help by individuals. Polish families are opening their homes to refugees. They offer close food and accommodation. Thousands of private cars are coming from all over Poland to pick up those who cross the border. On the first two days, we experienced a long traffic jams because of the number of cars coming from all corners of Poland. Polish people stand in lines for hours to donate blood for Ukraine. The scale of help was offered was so big that the government opened a special website, "Helping Ukraine," where volunteers can register and get guidance on those in need. While diplomats in my mission are fulfilling our diplomatic duties here in New York, our family members and friends are welcoming refugees coming directly from the war zone. In this conflict, Poland may not be a geopolitical superpower, but we want to be a solidarity superpower, and this is how we want to change the grim reality for better. At the same time, I would like to pay a tribute to those Ukrainians who defend their motherland and continue to stand for their country's freedom. Those are not only soldiers, but also people like Vasilina, a thirty-year-old mother of a small, of two small daughters, living in a village near the Polish-Ukrainian border. When offered a trip to Poland by my family, she answered: "I cannot leave Ukraine now. This is my country. I have to stay and take care of it." And now she is cooking food for soldiers and refugees at the border. A similar answer was given by our diplomats in Ukraine. We keep our embassies and consulates open, and they keep fulfilling their diplomatic and constitutional duties. Let me share with you, colleagues, the message to you I received today in the morning from our ambassador Bartosz Chicholski in Kyiv. I quote: "I am the Polish ambassador to Ukraine. I work in Kyiv, a city the size of Berlin inhabited by over four million people. From Thursday morning, I have to hide from the bombing in my basement several times a day. I wake to exchanges of machine gun fire. Windows are shaking from the missile detonations. I am convinced that right now, when you are deciding in New York, hundreds of thousands of terrified residents of Kharkiv, Dnipro, Zhitomir, Myriupol, Lviv, and Kyiv look at you with hope and faith in the power of international law." End of quote. And I wish to conclude by a reference to the warning expressed by a nineteenth-century Russian novelist Fyodor Dostoevsky in his book with a meaningful title, Crime and Punishment. The message of the book is following: when someone just like Raskolnikov thinks he is exceptional and free from moral obligations, and therefore feels entitled to committing a crime of murder, in the end, he faces the punishment from the crime itself, because committing a crime is already one's biggest punishment. There is no crime without the punishment. Thank you very much.
I thank the distinguished representative of Poland. And now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Austria.
Thank you, Mr. President. And as usual, Austria aligns itself with the statement by the European Union. However, we also want to add our voice in our national capacity, because what is currently being deliberately inflicted upon Ukraine does not allow us to remain silent. Excellencies, colleagues, fellow Ukrainians, let me start by thanking you, Mr. Secretary-General, for your clear words this morning and these past days. We are grateful to see that the United Nations is there to help those suffering and in dire need for help. We meet here today to discuss the Russian aggression against Ukraine, to discuss the violation of Article 2.4 of our UN Charter. That we meet here today in this room is a good thing and a bad thing. It's bad because it means after several days since Russia launched its aggression against the sovereign territory of Ukraine, we are still witnessing military attacks. des attaques militaires, de la peine humaine, de la perte de vie. C'est aussi mauvais parce que les questions de paix et de sécurité devraient être traitées par le Conseil de sécurité. Comme responsable principal de respecter la paix et la sécurité internationales, le Conseil de sécurité ne peut pas rester silencieux quand les principes de base de notre ordre basé sur les règles internationales sont trépétés par des chaussures militaires et squasillés par des tanks. Le vendredi dernier, cependant, la décision du Conseil de sécurité a été bloquée par la veto d'un membre permanent, la République Russe, même si 81 membres de la communauté internationale ont soutenu la resolution draftée des porteurs de la paire. Oui, le pouvoir de veto est préconisé dans le Charter de l'UN, mais aussi l'obligation de respecter les principes de l'UN. Si dans le 21e siècle, le Conseil de sécurité est bloqué dans une situation qui constitue une breach blatant de la loi internationale, nous devrions nous demander si ce système de pouvoirs de veto est toujours capable de réguler nos relations internationales. Cependant, collègues, notre réunion ici aujourd'hui est aussi bonne. C'est bon que l'Assemblée générale soit là pour intervenir si le Conseil de sécurité ne peut pas accomplir ses mandats. Et c'est bon que nous ayons maintenant l'opportunité ici, dans cette salle générale de l'Assemblée , de lever nos voix pour rappeler les principes du Charter de l'UN, notre Charter, et de dire clairement que nous ne resterons pas silencieux si le Charter est violé de la manière la plus sérieuse. C'est notre droit. C'est notre obligation en tant que membres de l'organisation. Collègues, à la fin de ce débat, nous voterons sur une résolution condamnant l'agression russe contre l'Ukraine et montrant de la solidarité avec le peuple de l'Ukraine. Austria votera oui sur la résolution et exige tout le monde de le faire aussi. Par voter oui, nous montrons au monde que l'UN est capable de prendre sa responsabilité de défendre le règne de la loi, la loi internationale et le Charter de l'UN. Par voter oui, nous montrons que ces actes et des actes horrifiant sont pas tolérés par la communauté internationale. Et le plus important, par voter oui, nous montrons au peuple ukrainien qu'ils ne sont pas seuls. Je sais que pour beaucoup de nous, ces votes peuvent être difficiles. Certains disent que c'est une question régionale, un problème européen. Collègues, un attaque contre l'un de nos membres, l'un de nos membres de cette organisation est une attaque contre nous tous. Dans notre monde interconnecté, notre monde est une région. Les armes cyber attaquent partout. Les missiles ont un accès global. Le monde n'est pas seulement régional, il est devenu local. Certains disent que nous devons respecter les préoccupations de la sécurité. Oui, collègues, nous devons. Tout le monde a des préoccupations de la sécurité. L'Ukraine l'avait et a abandonné les armes nucléaires et a confié que d'autres ne les blesseraient pas. Mais clairement, si vous avez des préoccupations de la sécurité, les solvez avec dialogue, pas avec des tanks. Si un pays avec l'un des plus grands armées et arsenal nucléaire se sent insecure, il devrait chercher la coopération, le dialogue, l'armement et pas la force contre d'autres. Certains disent :« Eh bien, regardez d'autres, regardez ces autres exemples que nous avons eu. Qu'en est-il des violations passées ?» Collègues, nous savons bien ce qu'est « qu'en est-il ». Tenter de justifier le mal avec le mal passé. Tenter de vous excuser en pointant les fautes d'autres. Mais juste parce que nous n'avons pas stand up dans le passé à l'injustice et au mal, cela ne nous empêche pas de stand up maintenant. Oui, c'est vrai, d'autres ont commis des agressions, des crimes et des fautes. Oui, la communauté internationale a parfois montré un manque de unité pour agir. Et oui, la communauté internationale a parfois été trop hésitante. Mais ne continuons pas à faire ce même erreur maintenant. Laissons-nous commencer une nouvelle ère quand nous travaillons ensemble et nous stand up, unis, pour nos principes communs. Défendons le règne de la loi. Ne nous laissez pas être le règne de la puissante. Voteons oui sur cette résolution. M. Le Président, Austria n'est pas partie d'aucune alliance militaire. Nous comptons sur notre sécurité sur le respect et l'implémentation de la loi internationale, des traités, des coutumes, incluant la loi humanitaire. Les rapports sur les attaques russes contre les civils et les objets civils dans les zones urbaines sont extrêmement effrayants. Les roquettes ou les missiles qui frappent aux bâtiments d'apartements en Kyiv ne peuvent pas être acceptés. Ces attaques constituent des crimes de guerre selon la loi humanitaire internationale. Nous exigeons à la Russie de s'adhérer strictement à la loi humanitaire internationale, en particulier sur la protection des civils dans la guerre urbaine, et de saisir immédiatement ces attaques et de se débarrasser de l'utilisation d'armes explosives dans les zones populaires. Nous condamnons fortement l'utilisation de munitions classiques, ce qui est incompatible avec la loi humanitaire internationale et outlawed sous la Convention sur les munitions classiques. Et collègues, la menace de l'utilisation d'armes nucléaires ? Any menace nucléaire de ce genre est une violation des principes du Charter de l'UN. Les conséquences catastrophiques impliquées ne respectent pas les frontières et posent une menace à toute l'humanité. C'est complètement inacceptable. Les perpetrators et ceux responsables de l'ordre de ces crimes doivent être jugés à cause. Le tribunal criminel international peut exercer la jurisdiction et enquêter sur tous les actes de génocide, crimes contre l'humanité ou crimes de guerre commis dans le territoire de l'Ukraine. En ce qui concerne cela, nous accueillons la déclaration de l'attache de la CNI, le procureur Khan, nous rappelant que son bureau peut exercer la jurisdiction et enquêter sur tous les actes de génocide, crimes contre l'humanité ou crimes de guerre commis dans le territoire de l'Ukraine depuis février 2014. M. Le Président, dans les derniers jours, les Ukrainiens ont enduré de l'incroyable peine humaine. Pour aider à réduire la catastrophe humanitaire, Austria a contribué à 2,5 millions d'euros à l'ICRC et aux ONG, et une assistance humanitaire supplémentaire sera décider bientôt. Les organisations de travail précieuses doivent être assurées en garantissant l'accès humanitaire. Collègues, en somme, Austria condamne l'agression russe contre l'Ukraine. Austria appelle à la Russie de renverser sa décision de reconnaître les républiques de Donetsk et Luhansk, ce qui représente une grave violation de la souveraineté et l'intégrité territoriale de l'Ukraine. Austria exige à la Russie de retirer immédiatement ses troupes et de stopper toute nouvelle pâture et de retourner sur le chemin de dialogue paisible comme tout membre de l'UN doit le faire. Vienna est prête à organiser et faciliter un dialogue comme ça. Nous espérons que le début des discussions bilatérales entre les delegations de l'Ukraine et la Russie peut servir comme premier pas vers une cesse de feu urgent. Et collègues, nous appelons à vous de voter oui sur la résolution d'aujourd'hui. Je sais que ce n'est pas toujours facile. Beaucoup de nous avons de bonnes relations avec la Russie. Nous aimons la culture, admirons les traditions et avons de bons amis russes. Mais un bon ami, un ami honnête, va parler et dire ce qui doit être dit et fait quand un ami commet un acte illégal et maléfique. C'est ce que cette résolution est pour. Imaginez pour un moment que vous êtes dans les chaussures de l'Ukraine. Qu'est-ce que vous attendriez de l'UN, de cette Assemblée générale, si vous étiez dans le lieu de l'Ukraine ? À cette heure sombre, c'est notre moral, notre obligation légale de condamner les violations du Charter et de montrer de la solidarité avec la victime d'un agression. Austria montrera sa pleine solidarité avec l'Ukraine, le gouvernement ukrainien, le peuple ukrainien. Nous sommes avec vous. Merci.
Je remercie la représentante distinguée d'Austria. Maintenant, je donne le droit à la représentante distinguée de la République Tchèque.
M. Le Président, M. Secrétaire général, excellences. La République Tchèque s'aligne sur la déclaration de l'UE et souhaite ajouter le suivant dans sa capacité nationale. Laissez-moi commencer avec les mots les plus importants que je puisse dire ici aujourd'hui. Nous exigeons à la Russie de stopper immédiatement ses actions militaires et de retirer inconditionnellement toutes ses forces et équipements militaires de tout le territoire de l'Ukraine. Nous nous réunissons ici aujourd'hui à un moment critique, non seulement pour l'Ukraine ou l'Europe, mais pour les Nations Unies en tant qu'ensemble. Un membre permanent du Conseil de sécurité de l'UN a commencé une guerre d'agression contre un membre de la même nation. C'est une violation blatant de la loi internationale. C'est une violation flagrante du Charter de l'UN et de ses principes, lesquels nous devrions respecter et respecter. Ce document seminale a été écrit avec l'objectif express de prévenir la scourge de la loi. Le président russe Poutine a choisi de rejeter la diplomatie et plusieurs offres de discours. En lieu de cela, il a décidé de lancer une conquête sauvage, infligant de la douleur incontournable et de la peine sur le peuple de l'Ukraine. Il y a des rapports horrifiants venant de l'Ukraine : des civils, y compris des enfants, morts dans leur ville. Des familles séparées, des centaines de milliers de personnes forcées à fuir pour leur vie. M. Le Président, laissez-moi le dire clairement. La Russie et son peuple ne sont pas sous menace de l'Ukraine ni de la NATO. Nous condamnons de la plus forte façon le threat de Poutine de l'utilisation d'armes nucléaires. En effet, c'est une rhétorique très dangereuse et n'exacerbé que la situation de sécurité globale. Rien ne peut justifier l'utilisation d'armes nucléaires. M. Le Président, la Russie doit être jugée à cause de ses actions agressives. L'Ukraine a accepté la jurisdiction du tribunal criminel international concernant le génocide, les crimes contre l'humanité et les crimes de guerre. Nous allons chercher à la CNI pour prioriser les investigations de crimes commis en Ukraine. De même, nous soutenons fortement l'affaire de l'Ukraine contre la Russie à la Cour de justice internationale, demandant à l'ICG de commander la Russie de cesser ses attaques illégales en Ukraine et de stopper les fausses plaintes de la Russie que les actes de génocide ont été perpetrated dans la province de Luhansk et Donetsk de l'Ukraine. M. Le Président, je voudrais reiterer mon soutien impensable pour la souveraineté, l'intégrité territoriale et l'indépendance de l'Ukraine dans ses frontières internationales reconnues, y compris la Crimea illégalement annexée. C'est pourquoi la République Tchèque met son soutien complet derrière la resolution générale de l'Assemblée de l'ONU. Le peuple de la République Tchèque s'appuie fermement sur l'Ukraine. La peine de civils innocents en Ukraine a créé une vague de solidarité entre nos gens. L'aide humanitaire coule à travers la frontière et dans les régions où les Ukrainiens fuient en desperate recherche de sécurité. Le gouvernement tchèque, les communautés locales ainsi que les individus ont offert et fourni de l'aide aux gens qui ont fuilli de la peine causée par l'agression russe. Et nous continuons à le faire. M. Le Président, nous regrettons profondément l'utilisation d'un veto de la représentante russe vendredi dernier pour bloquer la résolution du Conseil de sécurité de l'UN. Cela a empêché le Conseil de sécurité de remplir son rôle fondamental pour maintenir la paix et la sécurité internationale. C'est encore une preuve de la blatante disrespect de la Russie pour cette organisation. Cependant, le grand nombre de co-sponsors de la resolution draftée a clairement démontré l'opinion prévalente de la communauté internationale. M. Le Président, la Russie ne peut pas veto la réalité sur le terrain. Et laissez-moi échoir les mots du Secrétaire général de l'ONU, parlant après le vote vendredi dernier au Conseil de sécurité. Les Nations Unies sont nées à partir d'une guerre pour finir une guerre. Aujourd'hui, cet objectif n'a pas été atteint. Nous ne devons jamais abandonner. Nous devons donner à la paix une autre chance. Mesdames et Messieurs, nous, les représentants de 193 nations rassemblées ici à cette session spéciale d'urgence du Conseil de l'ONU, avons un devoir solide de respecter l'objectif et les principes de base du Charter de l'UN et de la loi internationale, comme nous allons voter sur une resolution draftée qui sera bientôt introduite officiellement. Mesdames et Messieurs, bientôt, chaque et tous les membres de ce corps honorable auront une chance de déclarer où ils se positionnent sur le Charter de l'UN et la loi internationale, et franchement sur la question la plus cruciale de la guerre et de la paix. Excellences, collègues, je fais appel à chacun d'entre vous, représentant tous les pays membres de l'ONU. Veuillez voter pour cette résolution. Votez avec votre conscience. Votez pour la fin de la pâture et de la peine humaine. Votez pour la paix. Votez pour le Charter de l'UN et la loi internationale. Votez pour tout le bien que les Nations Unies ont été fondées pour représenter. Et s'il vous plaît, ne nous laissez pas oublier que tout le monde regarde. Merci.
Je remercie la représentante distinguée de la République Tchèque. Et maintenant, je donne le droit à la représentante distinguée de la Suisse.
Monsieur le Président, Monsieur le Secrétaire général, chers collègues. Comme Dag Hammarsjold l'avait annoncé avec beaucoup de clarté, les Nations Unies n'ont pas été créées pour nous amener au paradis, mais pour nous sauver de l'enfer. Et pourtant, ce que la population en Ukraine vit pendant ces jours ressemble beaucoup à ce à quoi nous nous sommes engagés à éviter. C'est pourquoi cette assemblée se réunit aujourd'hui face à une guerre qui a déjà coûté la vie à de nombreuses personnes. Chaque vie perdue est une de trop. Nos pensées sont avec les victimes et leurs familles. Nous exprimons notre solidarité avec le peuple ukrainien et avec ses autorités démocratiquement élues. Nous sommes fortement préoccupés par la situation humanitaire et les déplacements de centaines de milliers de personnes. Cette assemblée se réunit aujourd'hui à la demande du Conseil de sécurité, faute de consensus entre ses membres permanents. La Suisse a soutenu le projet de résolution au Conseil de sécurité visant à mettre fin aux hostilités et à rétablir le droit international. y a restablecer el derecho internacional. El bloqueo de esta resolución por el veto de un miembro permanente y contrario al artículo 27 de la Charta, la Federación de Rusia, en nombre de parte de los conflictos, tendría que desabastecer de votar. Nosotros apoyamos plenamente el proyecto de resolución de la Asamblea General y llamamos a todos los Estados membreses a hacerlo también. La Sueca condena firmemente la ataque de Rusia contra Ucrania. También estaba preocupada por la utilización del territorio belarus para llevar esta operación militar. Las intentativas rusas por legitimar su acción no son crédibles. No hubo ninguna provocación permitente de justificar una tal ataque. Llamamos a Rusia, como a todos los Estados, dotados de armas nucleares, a desabastecer de toda amenaza de utilización de sus armas, incluso de su utilización. Rusia viene de unirse a una declaración del P5 que reafirmaba que una guerra nuclear no puede ser ganada y no debe jamais ser llevada. La Sueca reitera su apoyo a la independencia, a la soberanía y a la integridad territorial de Ucrania dentro de sus fronteras internacionalmente reconocidas. La Sueca llama de nuevo a todos los partidos a respetar el derecho internacional humanitario, así como los derechos del hombre. Condenamos todas las violaciones. También se lo prestamos al espacio ciber. La protección de la población civil, así como de personas fuera de combate, debe ser la prioridad. La Sueca está profundamente preocupada por las allégaciones de utilización de armas a bajo munición. Los bienes indispensables a la supervivencia de la población civil también que las infraestructuras civiles y médicas no deben ser consideradas como cibles. Además, pedimos a los partidos asegurar el acceso humano rápido y sin entraves, así como la seguridad del personal humanitario y médico. La Sueca es solidaria. Se involucra en movilizar recursos adicionales para responder a los necesidades humanitarias en Ucrania y en la región. Conjuntamente con sus socios europeos, mantendrá su larga tradición de acuerdos para los refugiados. Además, la Sueca ha tomado entero las sanciones de la Unión Europea contra Rusia. Saludamos el trabajo de la misión especial de observación de la Organización por la seguridad y la cooperación en Europa. Regretamos que la situación grave no dejó de tener otro opción que evacuar temporalmente su personal. La Sueca saluda la oferta de buenos oficios del secretario general de las Naciones Unidas, así como los esfuerzos diplomáticos de los Estados membreses que no negligaron ninguna pista para promover una resolución diplomática por la voz del diálogo. La Sueca reitera su oferta de buenos oficios si los partidos en conflictos lo quieren. Saludamos el hecho de que los partidos en conflictos se reunieron hoy para hacer primeras negociaciones. Esperamos, como el secretario general, vivamente que estas discusiones alcanzarán lo más rápido posible resultados concretos, como por ejemplo un cese al fuego. Este conflicto, como todo conflicto, no puede ser resuelto solo por el diálogo. Les agradezco.
Agradezco al distinguido representante de Suiza. Ahora le doy el premio a la distinguida representante de Nueva Zelanda.
Señor presidente, señor secretario general, hoy nuestros pensamientos están con el pueblo de Ucrania mientras continúan luchando contra la invasión a gran escala de Rusia. Vidas inocentes perdidas, vidas cotidianas en turbulencia, vidas jóvenes y viejas que nunca serán iguales cuando de repente se encuentran como refugiados inocentes. La parte peor del trauma que vemos desapareciendo ante nosotros es saber que fue completamente evitable. Nueva Zelanda no tiene duda de que el conflicto en Ucrania es un resultado directo de las acciones impovocadas y injustificadas de Rusia y de su decisión de ignorar flagrante la ley internacional. Rusia es escalando su agresión por su decisión de aumentar la preparación de sus armas nucleares. Las acciones de Rusia no son nada menos que las de un burla. Nueva Zelanda apoya la evaluación del secretario general de que estas acciones representan una violación clara de la integridad territorial y la soberanía de Ucrania y son inconsistentes con los principios de la Charta de la Unión Nacional. En apoyo a Ucrania, también estamos defendiendo la Charta de la ONU. No podemos elegir cuándo deshacer la centralidad de la Charta. Esta sesión de emergencia del Consejo de Seguridad general se está llevando a cabo como resultado directo de las acciones de Rusia sola. Sus agresiones militares continuas amenazan no solo la paz y la seguridad de Ucrania, sino también de Europa y de la comunidad internacional. Estamos aquí hoy porque el Consejo de Seguridad de la Unión Nacional fracasó en actuar el jueves pasado para condenar las acciones de Rusia para invadir Ucrania. El uso del veto, cuando no es solo parte de este conflicto, sino la causa directa de ello, es un desgracia. Nueva Zelanda, junto con un grupo de pequeños estados, oponen la otorgación del veto al P5. Continuamos oponiéndolo desde su creación y permanecemos fuertes en nuestra convicción de que no hay lugar para el veto en el Consejo de Seguridad de la ONU. Con el Consejo de Seguridad general fallando en cumplir con sus responsabilidades, nosotros, el Consejo General, debemos ahora levantarnos y jugar nuestro papel. Nueva Zelanda es un co-sponsor principal de la resolución general de la ONU y animamos a todos los estados membreses a votar en favor de la resolución en apoyo a Ucrania, en apoyo a la paz e seguridad internacional y en apoyo a nuestro Charta de la ONU. Disculpen. Nueva Zelanda ha expresado consistentemente nuestro fuerte apoyo a los esfuerzos internacionales para desescalar la crisis de Ucrania diplomáticamente. Teniendo de lado la diplomacia, Rusia debe ahora enfrentar las consecuencias de esa decisión. Nueva Zelanda ha unido a otros estados membreses en implementar medidas para responder a las acciones de Rusia, incluyendo introducir prohibiciones de viajes destinadas a funcionarios del gobierno ruso y a otros individuos asociados con la invasión rusa de Ucrania, y prohibir la exportación de bienes a las fuerzas militares y de seguridad rusas. Nuestros pensamientos hoy deben estar con el pueblo de Ucrania, que ahora se enfrentan a una crisis humanitaria causada por el conflicto. Echo el abrazo al presidente del Consejo de Seguridad general de que todos los estados membreses deben respetar sus obligaciones bajo la ley humanitaria internacional. Además, nosotros, la comunidad internacional, debemos actuar ahora para prevenir la pérdida de vida inmensa de personas inocentes y para apoyar a aquellos que ahora se encuentran desplazados por no culpa propia. Comendamos a los vecinos de Ucrania por sus actos despiadados de llevar a grandes números de ucranianos y otras nacionalidades que buscan refugio de este conflicto. Aceptamos con un senso oscuro de horror, pero tristemente, sin sorpresa, el papel de acompañante y facilitador que Belarus ha jugado en apoyo a la invasión de Rusia. Nueva Zelanda también ha extendido sus prohibiciones de viajes a los miembros clave del gobierno belarus. Nueva Zelanda contribuye financieramente a la respuesta humanitaria y considerará todas las opciones humanitarias disponibles para apoyar la respuesta humanitaria internacional. Felicito a Francia y México por la presentación de una resolución humanitaria en el Consejo de Seguridad de la Unión Nacional hoy. Finalmente, Altaróa, Nueva Zelanda, es una proponenta de paz y reconciliación. En este sentido, le decimos a Rusia: actúe consistentemente con tus obligaciones internacionales. Detente las operaciones militares en Ucrania. Retira permanentemente para evitar una pérdida catastrófica y inmensa de vida inocente. Haga todos los pasos posibles para proteger a los civiles en línea con la ley humanitaria internacional y regresar a las negociaciones diplomáticas como camino para resolver este conflicto. Gracias.
Agradezco al distinguido representante de Nueva Zelanda. Ahora le doy el premio a la distinguida representante de Panamá en nombre de la Alianza para el Desarrollo y la Democracia.
Señor presidente y señor secretario general, la República de Panamá, en nombre de la República de Costa Rica y República Dominicana, como países miembros de la Alianza para el Desarrollo en Democracia, tiene el honor de dirigirse a esta undécima sesión especial de emergencia con el fin de expresar su posición de esta convocatoria y al proyecto de resolución de la agresión armada no provocada por la Federación rusa contra Ucrania. Las delegaciones de Panamá, Costa Rica y República Dominicana, sobre la base de valores compartidos y el respeto a la Carta de las Naciones Unidas y al derecho internacional, condenamos el uso de la fuerza y la violación de la soberanía y la integridad territorial de Ucrania por parte de la Federación rusa. La Alianza respalda al secretario general de las Naciones Unidas, Antonio Guterres, en su llamado a que cesen las hostilidades y se potencie la aplicación de la moderación y la razón y que se respete el derecho internacional humanitario y la protección de los civiles. Reiteramos que todos los esfuerzos deben encaminarse también en posibilitar el acceso rápido, seguro y sin obstáculos de la asistencia humanitaria a quienes lo necesitan en Ucrania para proteger a los civiles, incluido personal humanitario y las personas en situaciones vulnerables, en especial los niños y niñas. La grave situación que plantea el desplazamiento de miles de ucranianos en busca de un refugio seguro en los países vecinos supone un desafío adicional a la compleja crisis global que ya nos había planteado la pandemia. Por ello, los países latinoamericanos, incluidos los miembros de la Alianza, hemos emprendido esfuerzos conjuntos para que se facilite un tránsito seguro de nuestros connacionales que cruzan la frontera de Ucrania. El diálogo y la negociación, acompañados del respeto a la letra y al espíritu de la Carta de las Naciones Unidas, las resoluciones de la Asamblea General y el derecho internacional constituyen la única garantía para una solución duradera al conflicto que hoy aqueja Europa del Este. Finalmente, hacemos un llamado firme para que se retomen las vías de la negociación y el diálogo diplomático, que la promoción de la paz y el respeto al multilateralismo sean el eje de las acciones en esta coyuntura. Muchísimas gracias.
Agradezco al distinguido representante de Panamá. Ahora le doy el premio a la distinguida representante de China.
Presidente. La situación ukrainiana está en gran的变化. The Chinese government is highly concerned about this situation. The situation has progressed to the point where the Chinese government is unwilling to see it. It does not comply with any benefit of any one side. The urgent task is to maintain the necessary containment and prevent the situation from worsening. At the same time, we need to strengthen our efforts to promote political resolution. The Chinese government welcomes the fact that Ukraine and Russia have already started a direct dialogue. Ukraine should become a bridge for bilateral communication, but not a forefront for international confrontation. We call on the parties to directly negotiate and create a favorable environment and conditions. Because this is the fundamental way to solve the problem. All countries and international societies, regardless of the采取的任何行动, must focus on regional stability and stability, and focus on general security. It should help to reduce the tense situation, and help to promote外交解决. The Chinese government does not support any possible化解矛盾的做法. The Chinese government supports the United Nations' international organizations to continue to develop humanitarian work in Ukraine. We believe that the lives and财产安全和人道主义需求 should be effectively ensured. President. China, as the prime representative of the United Nations, has always committed the responsibility of maintaining international peace and security. The Chinese government respects national sovereignty and territorial integrity. It follows the principles and principles of the United Nations' principles and its principles of the United Nations. We will continue to contribute to achieving and fulfilling the needs of the international community. President. The Cold War has already ended. The idea of collective fighting should be abolished. Filing new Cold War is harmful and harmful. A country's safety cannot be sacrificed for the safety of other countries. Regional security cannot be guaranteed by strengthening or expanding military groups. The Chinese government supports the European Union and the North East in a dialogue with Russia. It values the principle of security and security. It addresses the security requests of all countries, including Russia. It seeks to build a balanced, effective, sustainable European security mechanism to ensure the stability of the whole of Europe. I thank you, President.
Agradezco al distinguido representante de China. Ahora le doy el premio a la distinguida representante de Bulgaria.
Gracias, señor presidente. Señor presidente, distinguished delegates, Bulgaria aligns itself with the statement delivered on behalf of the European Union and I would like to highlight a few points in my national capacity. Señor presidente, estamos reunidos aquí hoy bajo circunstancias extraordinarias. Circunstancias que defienden la razón, pero, desafortunadamente, son la realidad. Y esa realidad es que la Federación Rusia, un miembro permanente del Consejo de Seguridad, está ejecutando un acto de agresión contra Ucrania, un miembro fundador de la ONU. Bulgaria condena con los términos más fuertes esta provocación militar impovocada y injustificada, que está en grave violación de la ley internacional y de los principios de la Charta de la ONU. La agresión militar ilegal de la Federación Rusia contra Ucrania no solo arrastra la seguridad y la estabilidad globales, sino también pone en desorden el orden basado en las reglas internacionales. Es desagradable que la Federación Rusia usara su poder veto para prevenir al Consejo de Seguridad de ejercer su responsabilidad primaria de mantenimiento de la paz e seguridad internacional.
Damage to essential infrastructure, interruption of basic services, including transportation and access to basic supplies, the danger to persons with disabilities, the elderly and children, are causes of grave concern. There are pressing humanitarian needs for medical services, medicines, health equipment, shelter and protection. The prospect of hostilities conducted in populated areas compounded by the possible use of explosive weapons and direct participation of civilians is also extremely worrisome. We urge all parties to avoid this scenario at all costs, bearing in mind the grave risks it poses to the civilian population. We call on all parties to adopt measures to ensure the protection of civilians and of critical civilian infrastructure, as well as to ensure unhindered humanitarian access to all those in need and the protection of refugees and displaced persons. We also reiterate our appeal to Ukraine and Russia to facilitate the withdrawal of all persons who want to leave the Ukrainian territory. Brazil expresses its gratitude to Poland, Slovakia, Hungary, Moldova, Romania and others that are facilitating the exit of people fleeing the conflict, including Brazilians and Latin Americans. Let me also take this opportunity to express our solidarity to all families who have lost someone in this war, to all people left without home, water and electricity, to those who are fleeing in fear, sometimes with nowhere to go, and to everyone who is now trapped in a conflict zone, desperately attempting to find refuge. I wish to commend all personnel that are now in Ukraine trying to alleviate the suffering of the population. We know that you are doing your best in very challenging circumstances, and we know that more could be done to assist you in your efforts. Mr. President, few times has the General Assembly been convened under the Union for Peace Resolution. By meeting today, the international community shows its unwavering determination to reach a diplomatic solution to the ongoing conflict in Ukraine. A peaceful settlement of the crisis is not only the cessation of hostilities; it is about creating the conditions for a greater sense of security among all involved. It is about rebuilding bridges and regaining trust, and it is about respect, respect for each other's legitimate security concerns, for civilian lives, for all countries that do not want a war, for international law and for the most basic principles that have guided this organization since its inception. I thank you, Mr. President.
I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Italy.
Mr. President, Mr. Secretary General, dear colleagues, Italy aligns itself with the statement of the European Union and wishes to add the following remarks in its national capacity. We do welcome the convening of this special emergency session. Following the impossibility for the Security Council to discharge its duties and adopt its own resolution on the matter due to the veto of the Russian Federation, the General Assembly had an obligation to make its voice heard in front of such a grave threat to international peace and security. We are thankful to those members of the Security Council that made this possible. Italy, together with its EU partners and allies, has made its position clear all along throughout this entire crisis with statements and consistent acts, standing firmly in support of the sovereignty and territorial integrity of Ukraine and in full solidarity with Ukrainian people. The unprovoked aggression decided by the Russian leadership is a blatant violation of international law and UN Charter, and as such, it has to be condemned in the strongest possible terms. The involvement of Belarus as a facilitator of the Russian aggression is also to be condemned. In close coordination with the EU partners and allies, we have implemented unprecedented economic and financial sanctions, including on Belarus. As already stated, further steps will have to be taken if the assault against Ukraine continues. We call upon the Russian Federation to stop immediately its action and to withdraw its military forces from the territory of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders extending to territorial waters. We urge the Russian Federation to respect the principles set in the UN Charter and in the Declaration of Friendly Relations, to abide by the Minsk Agreement, and to redirect urgently its action towards a peaceful solution. We trust that the General Assembly will, through the adoption of the tabled draft resolution, show cohesion and determination in dealing with a situation that is threatening the existence of a member state, causing a growing number of casualties, including civilians and children, and ultimately is undermining the very essence of multilateral relations. Mr. President, Russia's actions are causing enormous human suffering and triggering a humanitarian disaster. We express our heartfelt solidarity with Ukraine and its people, and we mourn all the victims of this mislead and vain na of this senseless war. Together with our partners and building on the support it has been provided since 2014, Italy is scaling up its financial and material support to strengthen the capabilities and resilience of Ukraine with an amount of around 110 million euros in aid credit and grants and additional contributions. We are also determined to provide increased humanitarian support to assist the people of Ukraine in these dramatic circumstances. In this context, international humanitarian law must be upheld. Safe and unhindered humanitarian access must be granted. The humanitarian staff must be protected. We welcome the convening of a meeting of the Security Council on the humanitarian dimension of this crisis later today, and we hope that the discussions will lead to the adoption of a concrete deliverable. Lastly, we acknowledge and support the statements of the Secretary General in defense of the principles of the UN Charter and his action in support of the humanitarian needs in Ukraine. Italy will remain actively engaged in close coordination with its European partners and allies and reaching out to the broader UN membership in favor of the immediate halt of this aggression and in support of the urgent return to a peaceful path. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Italy.
and for the world. When the drafters of the Charter envisaged our collective security system back in 1945, they probably thought they had seen the worst in terms of tragedy and human suffering. If they were here today, they would doubt that assessment. We are under a swift escalation of tensions that could put all of humanity at risk, but we still have time to stop it. Brazil voted in favor of the draft resolution before the Security Council on the situation in Ukraine. We regret that the draft was not adopted, but firmly believe that the Security Council has not yet exhausted the instruments at its disposal to contribute to a negotiated and diplomatic solution towards peace. The urgency of the situation convinced us of the need to add the voice of the General Assembly to that of the Security Council in seeking solutions to the crisis in and around Ukraine. No one can deny the primary responsibility of the Security Council for the maintenance of international peace and security, nor the complementary role that this assembly can play to that end. Brazil welcomes the engagement of the Secretary General in attempting to de-escalate the growing tensions. It also notes that Ukraine has initiated a case in the International Court of Justice based on the Genocide Convention. This is the moment for the principal organs of the United Nations to work together in pursuing one of the organization's main objectives: to save us from the scourge of war. For that, we need to be exceedingly cautious in moving forward, both in the General Assembly and elsewhere. We are currently witnessing a succession of events that, if not contained soon, could lead to a much broader confrontation. Everyone will suffer, not just those who are fighting. Those who have repeatedly pleaded for de-escalation will also bear the costs of the power play between NATO and Russia that we are currently witnessing. Over the last years, we have seen the progressive deterioration of the security situation and balance of power in Eastern Europe. The undermining of the Minsk agreements by all parties and the discrediting of the security concerns voiced by Russia prepare the ground for the crisis we are all witnessing. Let me be clear, however: this situation in no way justifies the use of force against the territorial integrity and sovereignty of any member state. It is against the most basic norms and principles we all abide by and a clear breach of the UN Charter. Mr. President, it is of our collective interest to jointly do all we can to stop and reverse the belligerent actions before it is too late. Brazil reiterates its calls for an immediate ceasefire in Ukraine as well as full respect for international humanitarian law. Equally important, we call all actors involved to reassess their decisions concerning the supply of weapons, the recourse to cyberattacks and the application of selective sanctions, particularly those which could affect the global economy, including the critical area of food security. At this moment, we need constructive solutions, not actions that will only prolong hostilities and spread the conflict with rippling effects to the world's economy and security. As we speak, hundreds of thousands of civilians have already fled Ukraine. Many more will certainly follow, millions perhaps. The destruction of infrastructure has left people without electricity and water. Damage to essential infrastructure, interruption of basic services, including transportation and access to basic supplies, the danger to persons with disabilities, the elderly and children, are causes of grave concern. There are pressing humanitarian needs for medical services, medicines, health equipment, shelter and protection. The prospect of hostilities conducted in populated areas compounded by the possible use of explosive weapons and direct participation of civilians is also extremely worrisome. We urge all parties to avoid this scenario at all costs, bearing in mind the grave risks it poses to the civilian population. We call on all parties to adopt measures to ensure the protection of civilians and of critical civilian infrastructure, as well as to ensure unhindered humanitarian access to all those in need and the protection of refugees and displaced persons. We also reiterate our appeal to Ukraine and Russia to facilitate the withdrawal of all persons who want to leave the Ukrainian territory. Brazil expresses its gratitude to Poland, Slovakia, Hungary, Moldova, Romania and others that are facilitating the exit of people fleeing the conflict, including Brazilians and Latin Americans. Let me also take this opportunity to express our solidarity to all families who have lost someone in this war, to all people left without home, water and electricity, to those who are fleeing in fear, sometimes with nowhere to go, and to everyone who is now trapped in a conflict zone, desperately attempting to find refuge. I wish to commend all personnel that are now in Ukraine trying to alleviate the suffering of the population. We know that you are doing your best in very challenging circumstances, and we know that more could be done to assist you in your efforts. Mr. President, few times has the General Assembly been convened under the Union for Peace Resolution. By meeting today, the international community shows its unwavering determination to reach a diplomatic solution to the ongoing conflict in Ukraine. A peaceful settlement of the crisis is not only the cessation of hostilities; it is about creating the conditions for a greater sense of security among all involved. It is about rebuilding bridges and regaining trust, and it is about respect, respect for each other's legitimate security concerns, for civilian lives, for all countries that do not want a war, for international law and for the most basic principles that have guided this organization since its inception. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Brazil.
une heure très grave. La Fédération de Russie, membre permanent du Conseil de Sécurité, a lancé une guerre d'agression... d’agression illégale et injustifiable contre la souveraineté, l’intégrité territoriale et l’indépendance politique d’un autre État membre de l’ONU, l’Ukraine. Les notions de la Russie constituent une violation flagrante de la Charte des Nations Unies, de ses objectifs et de ses principes. L’égalité souveraine de tous les États. Le droit de tous les peuples à l’autodétermination. Le règlement pacifique des différents et l’interdiction du recours à la force. En lançant cette guerre, la Russie cherche à détruire la liberté d’un peuple et d’une nation qui est souveraine, indépendante, et intégrale. C’est une guerre qui est basée sur le désir du président Poutine d’un retour à l’impérialisme Ce sont des jours contre lesquels les membres des Nations Unies luttent depuis des générations. Et encore, la Russie a empêché le Conseil de Sécurité de s’acquitter de son devoir fondamental : protéger la paix et la sécurité du monde. Nous sommes ici parce que la Russie a une fois de plus utilisé son droit de veto, que nous pensons est toujours illégitime, comme elle a fait de nombreuses autres occasions. Et la Russie menace maintenant l’Ukraine, l’Europe, et le monde entier d’utiliser des armes nucléaires en violation directe de la Déclaration commune des dirigeantes des cinq membres permanents du Conseil ce janvier.
Mr. President, it was in January of this year that members of the P5 agreed that a recourse to the nuclear option, to the nuclear threat, to the nuclear possibility was wrong. They admitted that no one could win this kind of confrontation. Just a few days later, President Putin announced that he was going to resort to this threat, directly contrary to what he had promised, signed, sealed, and delivered six weeks before. And so here we are, with a war that is a threat to each and every one of us. Through this resolution before us today, we as members of the United Nations have the chance to stand up, to stand up in defense of a free people, and to rebuke the evil notion that might makes right. And now, we must all step up and stand up. Canada urges all member states to unequivocally condemn Russia’s actions and to vote in favor of the resolution that is now before the Assembly. Russia has not been alone in undermining these foundational norms and rules, Mr. President. Belarus has also violated its obligations under the UN Charter and under international law. By allowing Russia to use its territory to invade and launch attacks against Ukraine, Belarus is aiding and abetting Russia’s illegal war of aggression. Belarus’s decision to send its force into Ukraine and to revoke its non-nuclear status are all completely unacceptable to us and completely incompatible with its obligations under the Charter of the United Nations. Mr. President, there must be accountability for these actions. As Russia has escalated its unjustifiable attack on Ukraine, its forces have encircled and shelled Ukrainian cities, targeting, killing, and maiming innocent Ukrainian civilians, children, women, and men. They are bombing civilian objects, hospitals, schools, kindergartens, apartments, and homes. They are looting and forcibly displacing civilians. Many hundreds of thousands have fled in freezing temperatures, seeking shelter across Ukraine’s borders. There are credible reports that Russian forces are using prohibited weapons, including cluster bombs, and imposing siege warfare on Ukrainian cities. This is not news that comes in last week, news that comes in this morning. Pictures one can see visibly on social media as to what is taking place. Very different from the wars that have been waged in the past. We know what is happening in real time, and it is completely abhorrent. Let me be very clear, Mr. President: these are violations of international law, and they are acts that could amount to war crimes under international humanitarian law. Those acts flow directly from decisions that were made by President Putin and his inner circle, that were enabled by Belarus and their leaders, and carried out by Russia’s armed forces and its proxies. These crimes began with an idea. What was the idea? We don’t have to invent it. All we have to do is read President Putin’s speeches and watch his declarations. The idea that a group of people are lesser, unequal, and unworthy, worthy of the protection of the law. The idea that a people in fact do not exist as a people, that they don’t have a right to be themselves, that they don’t have a right to their own nation, to their own country, that they have no right to the protection of the Charter. The way Vladimir Putin describes the Ukrainian nation and its supporters over many generations fits the description of the idea that I have described. And it’s that idea that lies at the heart of the acts that follow, because actions don’t come out of the blue, they don’t come out of nothing. It all starts with an idea. And yet, with a terrible sense of irony, President Putin has perverted the very notion of genocide by alleging that genocide has been committed in Ukraine. I must stress: there has been no such finding substantiated by any UN or independent organization. And as my colleague from Brazil said, just speaking before me, if there are complaints, and obviously there have been in this chamber and in the Security Council with respect to the treatment of the Russian minority in Ukraine, even if those complaints were fully justified, they are not an excuse for war, and they are not an excuse for the aggression that we have seen. Ukraine has filed its own application under the Genocide Convention to the International Court of Justice. Canada takes the allegations filed by Ukraine with the greatest seriousness, as it does the decision of the prosecutor of the International Criminal Court to begin an investigation into potential crimes against humanity. These decisions are not taken lightly, and they have the most serious of consequences. But I want to stress: it is the International Court of Justice and the International Criminal Court that are the places for these allegations to be dealt with, not the battlefield, and never by unilateral aggression. That’s why we signed up to the Charter. We signed up to the Charter because we agreed that we would subject our disputes to processes created by us over many, many arduous years and debates what would be done in the event of a profound difference of opinion between states. We don’t go to war, we go to the negotiating table, we go to court, we go to mediators. That’s how we resolve disputes. The other way lies madness. Canada and the international community will spare no effort to ensure that violations of international law in Ukraine are in fact investigated, that evidence is gathered, and that the perpetrators are held to account. We do so not only out of our conviction that the use of history, that the arc of history tends towards justice; we do so because what Ukrainians are being subjected to is horrific, and they deserve better, and they deserve more. Mr. President, if I may, I’d like to speak directly to the brave people and the government of Ukraine. We are quite simply inspired by you. We are standing with you, and you are not alone. Our support for Ukraine, your country, for your Ukrainian democracy, and for your right to choose your own future in Ukraine remains unwavering, steadfast, and resolute. Canada will do everything in its power to help you as you hold strong and defend your homeland against this terrible Russian aggression. Together with our partners, we will ensure that President Putin and those who ordered, implemented, and enabled this reckless war will continue to face significant costs and to be held accountable for their actions. Your struggle is now our struggle, and we are with you. Mr. President, if I could speak directly to the people of Russia, to the Russian protesters who are bravely demonstrating against the war, who have been met with brutal force and arbitrary arrests by riot police, to the thousands of Russian citizens who have written letters, had the courage to put their name on a letter to the president of Russia condemning this reckless decision, to all those Russians at home and abroad who are opposed to this senseless war, and you are in the millions. Canada and the world, we see you, and we hear you. Your president, Vladimir Putin, has sorely miscalculated. He has ignored the democratic and law-abiding spirit of the Russian people. He has underestimated the brave Ukrainians defending their country from aggression, with whom you have no cause for war, no cause for hatred, no cause for violence. And he has severely misjudged the resolve of the world to stand against him. Whatever lies are spoken here today, trying to justify the unjustifiable or to explain the inexplicable, it is President Putin’s war of choice that is making your lives much more difficult. But there is always time for de-escalation, there is always time for dialogue, and your president must choose this path. Should he not, I believe it will show just how much contempt he has for you and for the future of your country and the planet that we live on and share together. Mr. President, we should all say together, directly to President Putin, “Stop this war. Stop this war. Stop it before there is more death, more pain, and more hardship. Stop the use of threats. Take your finger away from the nuclear button, and never put it back for as long as you Come to grips with the reality of our time, as in more serious and rational moments you have done. Mr. President, it is never too late to stop. It’s never too late to make a turn to diplomacy, to dialogue, and to negotiation. The alternative cannot happen. So now it falls to all of us, as equal members of the United Nations, whose equality and sovereignty, as I’ve said before, is what we signed up to when we became members of this organization. We need to stand up to the principles, for the principles of the Charter, for the purposes of the Charter, and to heal the hurt and pain that has been caused by this terrible war of aggression. This responsibility belongs to us and to no others. We sit here, we have to make decisions, we have to take every step we can, the human footsteps, to peace, to reconciliation, and to justice. That is now our job in the General Assembly, and we must seize this moment, this moment of accountability, this moment of justice, this moment of democracy. We must seize it together. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Canada, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Singapore.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We are meeting today in a historic emergency special session because the UN Security Council was unfortunately unable to discharge its primary responsibility for the maintenance of international peace and security as a result of the veto cast by the Russian Federation, which is regrettable. We welcome the convening of this emergency special session as it allows all countries, especially the small countries, to raise their voice, to state their views, and to register their concerns in this universal organ of the United Nations. Mr. President, Singapore has always taken a consistent position on the sovereignty, independence, and territorial integrity of all countries. Singapore is a staunch supporter of the rules-based multilateral system and of the United Nations. The unprovoked invasion of Ukraine by the Russian Federation is a clear and gross violation of the fundamental norms and of the fundamental norms of international law and of the UN Charter. The UN Charter prohibits the use of force and acts of aggression against another sovereign This is a matter of principle for all small states and a matter of fundamental importance to all members of the General Assembly. For a tiny city-state like Singapore, this is an existential issue. A world order where might is right, or the strong do what they can and the weak suffer what they must, would be profoundly inimical to the security and survival of small states. We cannot accept one country attacking another without justification, arguing that its independence was the result of, and I quote, “historical errors and crazy decisions.” We simply cannot accept such an argument. Such an argument and rationale would go against the internationally recognized legitimacy and terror- and territorial integrity of many countries, including Singapore. This is why Singapore condemns in the strongest terms possible any unprovoked invasion of a sovereign country under any pretext. We deplore the Russian Federation's special military operation against Ukraine, both its operation in the Donbass region and the broader land, air and sea attacks across Ukraine, including on Kyiv, the capital city. We also note with great sadness and regret reports of the growing number of casualties and the loss of many innocent lives as a result of this unjustified attack and act of war. We have taken note of the UN humanitarian and emergency relief coordinator's comments about the scale of the humanitarian assistance required to help those affected and we call for safe and unhindered access for humanitarian assistance to Ukraine and all those in need. Mr. President, we reiterate that the sovereignty, political independence and territorial integrity of all countries, including Ukraine, must be respected within its internationally recognized borders. The Secretary-General of the United Nations has stated that he considers the actions of the Russian Federation to be a violation of the territorial integrity and sovereignty of Ukraine and inconsistent with the principles of the Charter of the United Nations. We agree with the Secretary-General entirely. Let me repeat, we agree with the Secretary-General entirely and we support his call for the Russian Federation to withdraw all its troops from the territory of Ukraine and for the responsible actors to immediately cease all hostilities and prioritize diplomacy to address all issues peacefully in accordance with the UN Charter and international law. We also support the good offices of the UN Secretary-General to be deployed in any way possible to facilitate diplomatic contacts and negotiations. Mr. President, let me conclude by saying that the world is watching us as we meet today in the General Assembly. As members of the General Assembly, we have to act swiftly, firmly and with unity of purpose. Singapore is one of the main co-sponsors of the draft resolution that has been tabled for adoption in this General Assembly. Singapore will not hesitate to vote yes on this draft resolution. Singapore will always vote to uphold the principles of the UN Charter and to uphold international law. And I would like to urge all members of the General Assembly to vote yes for this resolution. And distinguished delegates, this resolution is not about taking sides. It is about upholding international law and the principles of the UN Charter. The United Nations, distinguished delegates, is being tested today. It is important that all countries, especially the small states, send a clear signal that we are united for peace and we are united to defend the principles of the Charter and that we are united to uphold international law. I thank you for your attention.
I thank the distinguished representative of Singapore. We have heard the last speaker in the debate on this item for this meeting. We shall hear the remaining speakers this afternoon. I would like to inform members that at 3:00 PM today, the General Assembly will first hold the 60th plenary meeting of the 76th regular session as announced in the Journal. This will be followed by the second plenary meeting of the 11th emergency special session at which the debate on Agenda Item 5 will continue. The General Assembly has thus concluded this stage of its consideration of Agenda Item 5. The meeting is adjourned.
We are working very close with France and we hope that the consultations about the text will continue. There is no rush for it because it's a serious document.
Mr. Vassilopoulos, when are you expecting votes on first the General Assembly resolution and then the humanitarian resolution?
No, we will follow the procedures and they are very clear. There are procedures to follow on when the vote may take place after you upload a draft.
Do you have a comment, Vassil, around the ICC prosecutor wanting to open an investigation?
I made a statement in the Security Council referring to the press statement by the prosecutor. So you can go in record and check my statement online. We welcome the statement that he made. We also would like to, as he does in his statement, we also invite all the parties to provide him with necessary logistic and financial assistance in performing his duties and investigation.
Excuse me, when you say there is no rush for the French resolution, are you telling me...
When I say rush, I mean that we should not really act frantically. We should act according to the procedures and fully informed about what is going on around us.
Mr. Vassilopoulos, what's your next step at the United Nations? What is Ukraine going to be doing?
We will continue to consolidate the very clear position of the healthy majority of this organization in defense of the Charter and saving this organization for the future generations.
Can you tell us a bit more about the text messages you read at the General Assembly? How did you obtain them?
What? What text?
The screenshots.
You can go to the authorities of Ukraine and you ask and they are verified by the authorities.
Vassil, where did you find out from the top, from the beast top of your government, what's really happened?
No, I have no comments because they will continue tomorrow. Too early to comment. Too early to comment. I have no readout for security reasons. Alright? So see you soon.
Do you expect your Foreign Minister coming back to New York?
That's it?